And you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, it is February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, six thirty. Do I have the public order and your acceptance of the agenda?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome everyone. I'd first start with our our statement here. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. And we ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there's disagreement. The value of the participation of our community. We want everyone, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. And we ask our community members and all those who participate in committing standards to support and respect our community from that not seeing any whining walk-ins. Seeing anyone. We'll now go to the report on the town administrator.
Good evening. We're gonna start with the water treatment plant. The carbon replacement is completed. The water treatment plant is now back online, so we want to thank everybody for their cooperation and patience. Although we did this much needed maintenance project. When we have the new plant, we won't have to shut the plant down completely when we do maintenance because we'll have, we got it to see if that doesn't exist. Current plant, so the carbon's replaced, the water's been run, everything's back to what it needs to be, so. Thank you guys for your patience. We are back online. A big project in North Citrus, Minor Peak, an Irishman project will kick off this week as the contractor mobilizes their equipment and begins to prepare for materials and installation. We'll be staging at the end of Gannett right again in the Glade Road. The material that's going to be placed on the beach will be brought from the top, brought to town from different sources. Sample is available at the library if anyone wants to see what it looks like. Until we mix it up, Union Street, Little North Citrus Beach to be spread. The material will start arriving tomorrow and will start being spread on Monday, May fourth. Project hours are seven AM to five PM. Expecting the last eight to ten weeks. We have the notification up on all our social media pages. Send our emails last. Glade Road will be one way during the operation. Material will be brought by tractor trailer and is prepared with heavy equipment, so if you don't need to be in the area, we ask you please stay out of there before getting in the way of the contractors' trucks. Rowers will be open. The police and the DPW and contractor will enforce the traffic measures. If you have any questions, contact town engineer Sean McCarthy and S. McCarthy at CitrusMA.gov, Corey Miles, C. Miles at CitrusMA.gov. Give us also information on the town website about the project, what it's gonna look like, how far that project is being spread. Our contractor, our engineering company, is also working down in the area of Turn Road, Light House Road. They're surveying that seawall from Citrus out all the way around to the back of the road. This is the first stop step in designing the placement and the repair of that seawall. It's expected in a thick couple of weeks. It should actually wrap me up this weekend and next week. So their their task is to design the replacement seawall and also figure what's there and design repairs. Make sure that that structure does not deteriorate any further. Once we get that report, we'll start making those repairs as necessary. Presidential primaries next Tuesday, March fifth, through the high school gym from seven AM to eight PM. Our voters should receive twenty twenty four vote by mail form, secretary of state Commonwealth. If not, the form is available on the town website on our clerk's page. All of you turn the form, the vote by mail form, if in fact you would like your ballot mailed. Last date to request a mailed ballot was today. I'm so sorry, Mr. Evans, five o'clock. Can you see the ballot in the mail? Please return it properly. Remind people, mailed ballots cannot be brought to the polls on election day. They must be returned by the time. Please don't bring them on election day. The voting is underway. If you're gonna be away prior to May twenty fourth, you have some other primary, you can also absentee vote. So all that is available at the town clerk's office. Please contact her if you have any questions. Other election news, nomination papers are available for the twenty twenty four town election, which will be held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty fourth, the Citrus High School Gym Day. Days. Officers available, RS follows, one year term, town moderator, three year terms, select board, assessor, town clerk, school committee, planning board, two board of library trustees. There is a position, affiliate major chairman on the planning board and a planning board alternate, a five year term on the housing authority. Again, if you're interested, contact town clerk's office, seven eight one five four five eight seven four three. You must submit at least a hundred signatures of registered voters with the town clerk certification by Friday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, by five PM. Reminder, beach and transfer stickers are still available in town clerk's office. The transfer station stickers expire in March, so please make sure again and get your new stickers. The beach stickers, they won't affect Memorial Day to Weber Day. We will not be ticketing in the off season, but we still need your stickers for beach season. Special disabilities, we're hosting an accessibility awareness event, brought accessibility services and resources. Citrus residents, caregivers, families and friends on Saturday, March night, ten AM to one PM, Citrus High School Gym Day. This is an annual event. It's a great event. If you have any questions about services that might be available, or vendors, state agencies, not commissioned, they're the answer to the question. Water Resources Committee is hosting their annual rain barrel sale for people wanting a rain barrel. Voters must be placed by midnight on Sunday, March twenty fourth. Barrels can be ordered online from the Great American Rain Barrel website, www.GreatAmericanRainBarrel.com backslash community. Select Massachusetts, that's Citrus, the drop down menu is on the left hand side. Barrels are normally a hundred nineteen dollars or more, but at discount for this program, you choose a painted barrel, which is gray, green or brown, for eighty nine dollars. Unpainted, black barrel for eighty four dollars. A tarot card barrel, barrel, barrel for eighty dollars. Barrels will be available for pickup at the transfer station on Saturday, April sixth, from eleven AM to three PM. A note, if you're planning on connecting your barrel to a downspout, you will need to purchase a flexible downspout elbow or ring divert to use with your barrel. We have one more Citrus, Sister City Film Festival movie coming up. There is also March fifth, seven PM. West Coast, on my left foot. Suggested donation is ten dollars. Reminding everybody that we have a link in our website for the Hadley Cushion MSBA school project. It's right at the top. It's the red banner. That is coming up for a vote above the town meeting and at the ballot will spring, so please go, click on that link and get information about this project. In a nutshell, it's the construction of a new elementary school on the site of the Hadley. Oh, and that is completely old Hadley and the old cushion will be demolished. The old cushion right now will be scheduled in some sort of athletic fields or play area. And finally, Citrus Food Pantry is continuing to see increasing client seeking assistance. We're grateful for all the generosity with the donors. The most needed items right now, decaf coffee, canned instant, hamburger helper, cranberry juice, mixed canned vegetables, baked beans, jello, a jello pudding, beef soup, rose rice and pasta sides, canned white beans and white tuna. This can be dropped off the pantry during operating hours. All the bins behind the old gate schools through the library and village market and Shaw's also collect full pantry. Sort of half the time.
Excellent. Thank you. That was a great idea to have the sand at the library, so.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions?
Tim, on the, on the elections, I don't think, I'm not sure I might have missed it, but people need to understand, once you mail in your ballot, you can't change your mind when they go down to Taft Hall to change it or to go to the voting place on election day. You mail it in. I'm sure that, you know, if you're nervous when you get there, you can sort of check with the town clerk's office, but once it's in the mail, it's in the mail.
You only get one ballot, so if you received a mailed ballot, we'll have problems if we try to give them a vote in the press of the day of the election.
Well, it's happened quite a bit.
It's happened quite a bit. Still happening now.
But I do kind of agree with my people. That's it.
Uh, just to, yeah, I agree with Mr. Goodrich. Thank you for all of the outreach about that folks know about the beach punishment, that communications outreach is really great and that we appreciate the efforts and you missed it and we weren't paying attention. Um, but I did want to ask you about this as well. During this, the renovation, are there restrictions to beach access?
Uh, you will be able to go on the beach from that entrance.
Of course.
Uh, from Tada Mida, we won't be spreading all the way down to Minor Peaks. We should still be able to access Minor Peak.
Definitely.
Yeah, not the regular beach, we'll be on post office.
Great.
The project doesn't extend down that far. Might have a little bit of a problem getting there. Getting a lot of construction. That won't be affected, it's not aware of all the construction.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move to the first initial item, the acceptance of generous donations.
Good evening. The first generous donation we have accepted tonight is five hundred dollars to the communication commission from Charles and Lynn Pollard. We'll thank them for their generosity and this is something that they thank for. And the second one, I'll just move the vote and then you can see how you want to vote them. It's a one thousand dollar donation, also a repeat donation from the Chilling Insurance Adjusters for the fire department dive team for equipment.
That's great. Yeah, so generous, fabulous, it's part of our mission. Questions, more anything, or?
Thank you. I'm curious, I know it's been years, but do you know how many years the, the diving donation has been?
It's several.
I, yeah.
I'm not sure how, how many total.
It's greatly appreciated.
All in motion.
Uh, move that the select board accept a five hundred dollar donation for use by the dedication commission with our names to Pollard family.
Scampio, second. Second one is. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous.
And we will accept the donation from the Chilling Insurance Adjusters to use for purchase dive equipment for the fire department dives. To our next.
Scampio, second by, and.
Second.
Harrison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. Next, we have Rich. And our discussion on Tiki Valley's common dick license changed for Sunday hours. Yes. Was done on common dick. They're pushing the royal naming. Okay.
So much here.
Yes. Um, yes, earlier Sunday license is things that we can put up at ten o'clock. Uh, we'd like to move to eight AM, just so breakfast, we're not asking for a liquor, liquor to be non-stated, ten o'clock mandated, but just to move from ten to eight AM, which is the other six days of the week, we do that until eight AM.
I'm delighted that you're into the business and has rewarded. It's needed too.
Yeah.
Once you lost Duncan, now it's down there.
We're a little bit, no offense.
It's a place to go and then if Sam's closes, which is occasionally, it's.
Yeah, we've, we've been going over it, it's very close. It's, it's a little bit, it's come summer time to do the commercials. We'll figure it out.
And of course, we do have to be lucky for getting there and they wanted to get a little place.
Yeah.
Lucky for them, thank you. I didn't want to not mention them, so. The same.
They do very.
So. Great.
Yeah, that's pretty, I mean, I'm gonna do it right tomorrow to Sunday. That I love it. Well, and then motion.
Move that the select board approve revised twenty twenty four common visual license for Paul speaking, doing businesses, Tiki Valley Sports Cafe, to Sundays at eight AM. Second.
Anybody else standing by this? Can't feel all those in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for your information.
I was curious where the term came from, so I just, I just Googled it, not like I knew. There you go. All right. Wedge.
We love this.
I know. We have to have fun while we're up here. All right, Wedgewood Beverages, Inc., it's next on the agenda. I think this person, Tyler, is gonna be zooming in. And we're here to talk about a change of manager, the liquor license.
Yes, uh, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, yes.
Uh, so my name is Tyler Hensler. I'm an attorney here in Boston. Here representing Wedgewood Beverages, Inc., DBA The Barker House, uh, here for a change of manager uh, for Duncan Garrett. Duncan is joining me, uh, also on Zoom right here. Great. So Duncan is a US citizen. He's a Massachusetts resident. He's familiar with the rules and regulations of this board, the ABCC, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and he has experience in the industry. He's, you know, been working at, uh, Wedgewood, uh, at this location, uh, for a few months, but for that, he was working for them back in, back in California. Um, so if you guys have any questions, we'd, we'd be happy to answer, but, uh, uh, we'd like to thank you for your time and, and for the Zoom accommodations tonight.
Uh, yeah, thanks for, thanks for zooming in. Appreciate that. Uh, Duncan, welcome to Citrus. Uh, I, the background is thorough, it seems very serious. I, uh, I think your resume, um, speaks to your experience for this role, so I'm feeling very comfortable. Um, but this board, um, is very serious about, uh, you know, the responsibility of having managers, um, you know, being charged in the liquor distribution and the liquor license out of that. So I just wanted to ask you, um, how the catering venue is, uh, is supervised as opposed to, you know, a normal bar, you know, point of purchase? How do you, how do you make sure that, you know, folks in the wedding are appropriately being served?
Mr. Garrett, are you able to unmute yourself? Can you do that?
I think he's having an issue, uh, unmuting, because that is an answer, that is a question that Duncan can answer, not me.
Yes, I, I do.
Oh, there we go.
Did that work?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I've been, I've been on the road for the last twelve hours, so I'm kind of like gearing my bearings here. I apologize. We have, um, every one of our bartenders, um, has done their, um, training for tips. Um, and then we also have security cameras as well, as well as, uh, security for each event that, um, kind of, uh, roams the building and monitors the, uh, the venue as well.
Thank you. No.
Awesome.
No, I don't. The presentation is really good.
Yeah.
Really thorough. A lot of experience in this industry.
Yeah, uh, again, the resume for folks here, very thorough. As you say, we know it's not about tip certification. It's critical for us when we look at everything and, um, looked at these over the years, and again, this is, checks all the boxes for what I'm comfortable with, so with that, we have a motion.
Move that the select board approve the application for change manager license to Duncan Garrett, the Barker House, by Wedgewood Wedding, located in twenty one Barker Road for an on premise section twelve restaurant slash all alcohol beverage license.
All right, Ms. Conley, for a second.
Second.
Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
A lot of the wedding season.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Next. Next. A slow roll out.
How are we?
We've got permission to join as well. Ready to press permission for the best call committee. I'm borrow sixty four Edward Road in Washington, yes. We are, cannot wait to hear about the slow roll.
Yes. We're excited to, uh, hopefully put on the event, so. We're here today to seek the approval for our help for the planet. Slow roll community bike ride event, which would take place April twentieth, which I believe is Earth Day, is that correct, Ron? On Earth Day at eleven AM. Uh, we do have a rain date scheduled to for April twenty first. The route starts at the recreation department. Uh, it will follow down First Park Road, down Everett Gloucester Road, up to Peggy Beach Road, and then end at Peggy Beach Parking Lot, uh, where we will have all sorts of fun activities, free giveaways, food trucks, ice cream trucks for all those that are registered and doing it. Fun event for all ages, five dollars per participant, and the registration will be open on March nineteenth at five thirty PM with our, uh, with our recreation, uh, registrations, which is the same time as well for spring. We're gonna be capping it at a hundred fifty participants for the first go around. Groups will be instructed by our staff to leave intermittently every three to five minutes, so we're not logging up the roads. This will allow for somewhat normal traffic. Uh, DPW will help saw horse off an area at the Peggy Beach Parking Lot, which will help us contain everything. At the same time, we'll have an area left open for any public parking. I'm gonna have to drill in touch upon some of the food trucks, amenities and other activities that we have in a second. Uh, just a few other side notes. We have met with, uh, Citrus Police Department on multiple occasions. So we're all squared away in terms of safety protocol. Where they're gonna be at with the monkey tails and everything will not matter. Recreation is going to be running for just on all volunteers involved in the event to ensure safety uh, as well. Uh, setup time will be nine AM to ten fifteen. Check-in starts at ten thirty and groups will start to leave at eleven AM. And as I said, for most, you all need to be posted off of this, so. You feel like you can run smoothly just as it's. List fans will be used at sign in for registered participants. List will be generated by us at the recreation department with emergency contact info, uh, in those lists as well. Each bright group will have one or two volunteers that will lead the way down the beach. We recommend for those signed up to ride their bikes to the recreation department uh, if at all possible, because parking will be limited. So we are suggesting that if you have, please just ride a bike over the, the bracket. Any child registered that is in grade five or below must be accompanied by adults. Uh, this will clearly be spelled out at the time of registration. Uh, this, that's also the same code of law that we use for all of them, so sticking with it. Uh, and then waivers, obviously, will be signed by all. And we're hoping, you know, for your approval and for this to, you know, we can start marketing and really getting it out there to the people, so we can start. We can still, we can start promoting, so, uh, happy to answer any questions, but I'll have John chiming in as well with what activities we're gonna be at that beach.
Yes, if I may, uh, thank you very much, and we're just delighted that this duly formed request for committee can join with the, um, support and, you know, marketing skills of the recreation department and where we're going to get them, the word out. Great falls into the police department willing to, um, co-host really and serve, uh, without, uh, all type of things. They're offering to their support for safely getting from, uh, A to B, which is Old Gate explosion to the recreation department and, uh, Citrus Council on the AG down to Peggy safely. So upon arrival at, um, Peggy Beach, we are planning and, uh, or organizing Moms on the Build a Food Truck, which is a popular truck around the South Shore locations to be there on site, able to celebrate their ride and have a good bite to eat in this wonderful food truck, uh, which you have to notice also to see if their ice cream truck could be there. Um, we've also had contact with Bishop Bernano, who is a citizen here in Citrus with his Rolling Wave Foundation to provide some bike, um, structure, uh, um, construction and safety tips and things, so they'll be, um, folks have a chance to really embrace, uh, the bicycle and the fact that they, how they got there um, to the beach and then learn more about it. It's, uh, so our first big endeavor with, uh, the, one of the newly appointed bike community has been able to write a grant for some bike racks. We're working on mapping some possible bike lanes, either separated or otherwise, which is a chance to promote an awareness of biking, the benefits obviously to the planets and to the environment by bicycle riding. Uh, and as you said, basically being able to host it for, um, anyone um, who could ride a bike, wishes to ride a bike, or be in a trailer or on a bicycle, um, you know, ages zero to ninety, so. Very excited to be, uh, having this be our sort of first rollout, slowly roll out safely and down downhill to Peggy Beach.
It's just a kickoff, like, we're hoping it takes off and that it's, you know, God willing, an annual event, so. Well, hoping it all goes well.
And so tell me, just more about the genesis, because I know the newly formed city and this was just to be like there, who, uh, how this kind of, just show other. Uh, we, we certainly do platter other towns who have, um, successfully had versions of this, right, which is a, um, a company slow roll bicycle. Um, it, it's not quite going to be the critical mass that you might find in some urban centers where people show up unannounced or they have announced to each other, but they're gonna show up. This is planned and, um, organized and based on other towns. Uh, the critical mass might happen there. I love it. This, this is planned and organized based on what other towns have done. A little awareness, which is why we're, uh, bike committees, um, invested in writing grants to bring bike racks to towns to get the notion, oh, there's a bike rack. Oh, there are bikes there. People are biking. And then the same time or soon after, bike lanes approved, working with DPW, structure appear, and maybe you can, uh, slowly, uh, increase, uh, the opportunities to bicycle safely in amongst, uh, the other commuters, be they on scooter vehicles or by foot.
We are looking for volunteers too, so.
Well, there might be a stipulation on this group line, so maybe it might be a, a taste, a taste bike. It's my volunteer. I lead the way. It, it is not a race.
Not a race.
Not a race.
Just to make sure everyone's a slow roll. Urecycle, bicycle. tandem, any bicycle. It'd be great.
Yeah, couple of questions. Um, so I, I can certainly envision you getting from the Old Gate School down to Peggy Beach. What happens? People have to go back. Will the roads be monitored for the way back as well?
So, yeah, it's, it's ending at Peggy Beach. Um, but we can talk to the police to see if they can at least wait around for a little bit, just to make sure that everybody gets back that way safely. That certainly can be done. Yeah.
You know, unless, well, humans probably do, but
Well.
uh, it's just the, the thought of having to have a road monitored for basically three hours would be sort of, um, but.
And more. Upon registration, people will know that their, uh, compliment is gonna be from recreation department to Peggy, right, and
Yep.
uh, back to your defenses.
Because they don't necessarily have to come back to the ref, I mean, they can disperse wherever, whether it's home or anywhere.
Well, I guess that's up to the parents, their cars, they should obviously, uh, pick up, drop on that sort of thing.
Right.
Um, have you checked the tides?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're okay on tides?
We are okay.
And train times.
As we know, sometimes there's a parking lot there, sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes it's not, yeah.
And the training times as well, the free bus train.
Well, we, yeah.
Oh, you got.
There's a crossing.
There's a crossing on the street. Okay, great. Wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sounds like fun. Yeah, I just, I really, I want to say you're going through all the details. You know, it's like, oh, we're having a bike ride, but not the effort to get to the actual place.
Yeah.
One thing, the recreation department for park during uh, bike mission, there are a lot of us, I'm sure you're not thinking, figuring it out.
Of course. Uh, we're happy, we're happy to, uh, be involved with the department, so. Feel like we both go hand in hand together, so, you know, why not, why not help move them?
Yeah, that's a win, that will be a celebration.
Recreation in my D.
Great, yeah, it's, uh, congratulations. Getting this first thing, you know, like, well, like.
Like riding a bike.
No more tons up here. Oh, no, no, I just want. I do have one question. Uh, this is great, first of all. I'm hoping I'm available that we can do it too.
End of vacation week.
Uh, yes. Um, you mentioned safety. Are helmets required?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Definitely.
And those, like, ways to help people get a helmet if they don't have a helmet?
Yeah, I know we do have some extras at the rec, rec, rec department.
Okay.
But yeah, it'll definitely be written out in the description that helmets are certainly required. And people will clearly see that when they go and register, so.
That's, and I think could be improved around town, as I drive around town, I still love almost just, yeah, I don't know, that's great. Thank you.
There's no other, yeah.
Move to a professional that happened to recreation, recreation department on Saturday, eight twenty three forty. Do you want it to be your settings at nine?
We're gonna stay, we're gonna stay nine o'clock.
So I think you should add this to, from nine AM down to two AM for a family.
So I think you should add this to from nine A M to two P M for a family bike ride. Down first, we are surely have a foster road and then even Piggie Beach.
Moved by Miss Cantfield, who was second.
Second.
Second by Miss Harrison, help us in favor.
Aye aye.
Aye, you nass. Thank you. Slow rolls on.
Yeah.
Thank you. See you there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, information technology contracts. We see F control. How are you? How are we keeping everyone safe, monitoring and keeping all the data safe, questions there as well?
This is one, um yeah, that'll all that. But this, this contract is for uh the security cameras around town. You know, all the archivers that they all report to, they're uh seven years old. It's, they need to be replaced with long high racks. High racks aren't coming along. Actually, don't have any left. And I have one that needs to be replaced. Um and in this, I think I I attached the uh spreadsheet to the packet where it lists the different individual items that other different individual projects that are are gonna be in replaced, reformed, upgraded. Um some of them access control of the library for public meeting spaces. So it was to be programmed, automatically lock and unlock. Uh like we do at other, other buildings. We're proactively replacing a jail cell, opening some to cameras. Some buildings, some cameras on the perimeter of public safety, adding cameras to the church bills, the four cameras each. Four heads, well, whatever. Uh and then adding uh cameras various other places where in town.
So I just, those are sort of this contract, um the Oregon State contract. Say that this money's already, we've already, it's already gone through this, approved this money uh prior. And now we're just going through this for V C M controls.
And the far majority of it is the storage servers.
Yeah.
Of the top.
And can you, I know you've looked at this and I know this. Why not save all this stuff in the cloud, keep it loaded, do what we do. I know what you're doing, best practices, just so folks know money being spent. Only why this is the best way to do it.
I would love to move it to the cloud. Uh we've had lots of conversations on it, on it. And my overall feeling is that the market is not mature enough yet. We have a lot of features that we currently get, the solution that we have on-prem. The solutions that are currently available for cloud offerings, there just lack of features. There is one, there is one vendor who has a very feature rich. Uh but they require you replace all your cameras with proprietary camera that only they work with. And that's ridiculously expensive.
Right.
Um and then the other part of all of that is when the time comes, I'm I'm hoping by the time we certainly replace the market, we do mature enough. But we don't have to go long time service anymore. We can go to the cloud. The flip side of that is you can switch from capital, one-time capital cost, to then the annual operating cost. So that's a different conversation.
Yeah, your question, maybe this is more of Miss Cantfield's alley, but the a- access to plush beauty space at the library has been a problem for a long time. Is this something that often makes it better?
It is. So specifically the uh two conference rooms in the front of the building, we want them in the front, that's good to the right.
Right.
And then access to the one in the lower level.
Right.
Um there's still uh some manual intervention by the library staff locking all the interior doors and they didn't do that anyway. This really is just an access control of the front door with the best of deal. The interior hallway leading into those two small conference rooms on the front, right? And then also access control on the door downstairs.
So I don't wanna give you the boring details, but there were key problems.
But Karen, like, like the town hall, those are those are meeting. Meetings go at ten o'clock, doors lock at ten fifteen.
Okay.
So and then if you have the code, double, you can do this stuff online. But what it does, no one has to patrol the doors. We open it, close it based upon the schedule.
That's been the problem, I think.
Yeah, that's been the problem.
Because I I know that you can get out, but.
And then Nancy spends twenty minutes trying.
Yes. I never learned how to do it when I was in CPC, so I appreciate it.
So yeah, that automates what's now a manual process.
Thank you.
It it's more in line with what we have everywhere else in all other buildings.
So much purpose.
Yeah.
Now again, just the logistics of this, starting to think about it. I'm really good work again, and it's we don't appreciate, another thing that I appreciate is how many different areas around town, buildings are, it's just there's a lot of uh. Well, that is a much needed, start a motion.
Move toward on fact of B C M twelve corporation for upgrades to existing camera access into mobility structure. And the amount not to see two hundred eighty thousand two hundred forty six dollars seventy.
Miss Cantfield, second, if I'm mis, I'm with. Help us in favor.
Aye.
Aye, yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next.
Got a long time.
Hi.
So at the last meeting, the board tasked myself and those five generals to look at the structural costs per square foot. I mean, that was one, one of the things that was suggested at the last meeting. Before you, we are in your packet, you can have multiple different towns. Some towns don't use this. And Bob mentioned this is the default calculation. Uh if you don't use the fifty dollars per thousand dollars square foot. So I added a couple of towns so I can get a little bit more information um out there. For the most part, it's arranged from a hundred and ten dollars all the way up to four hundred dollars. Also in your packet, there was I would understand the constructions cost, I gave the cost per square foot and the average for all the fifty states, and this is uh retail. But for Massachusetts, it's two hundred and thirty dollars. And working with Bob, his recommendation is two hundred dollars uh across the board and then for garage, right, right now it's a hundred and fifty. And that would be for residential and commercial, whether it's an addition, uh new space or alterations. And then for garages, it would go from seventy five dollars to a hundred dollars per square foot for residential and commercial. And then for decks or porches, it would go from twenty five dollars to fifty dollars, which is what the um base permit is that he voted last last meetings.
Nancy, did you want it?
No. Thank you.
So uh again, just so folks at home know, and what we're talking about, uh again, I think there was some discussion that was brought up, uh our hundred fifty dollars uh for a default price. Adequate or not, or anyone can get a contractor. Yeah, but it's just for the foot, appropriate or not appropriate, as a default kind of space to be given these inflationary times. Um so that's kind of why we're having this discussion. So then I'll.
Oh, me? Nancy, thank you. As always, there are, they still think the industry standards are ridiculous, but it's good to have a context of, you know, what they're doing out there. So thank you for that. I'm very in line with what we were looking for.
And this is just the default, right, that it's uh.
The exception to the rule, well, instead of like maybe one in ten.
One in ten happens.
Right, right.
I agree that it's, I think it's higher than two hundred, I by far, but um it, we're moving in the right direction.
I thank you for doing it.
I love data collection. You know that. I'll be my son's nurse.
Hey, we miss someone all the time.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're out of time, so.
Yeah.
We're not even close.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I totally agree. I went there. Or it could be more. I mean, this is where we're here to single hit the double right there. This is no um some of these. The town relies so much on property taxes and these sorts of, or these other things else. So just we're not trying to soak the residents, but you understand that um two hundred per square foot, sort of being constructed, I think, reasonable to settle. So. Yeah, we keep monitoring.
Right, and it hadn't been updated for quite so.
Yeah.
It was due to be updated, two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen.
So this will apply as of March first. I assume that anyone who's already confused must do not apply to the number.
Correct. And is there any other further discussion concerns?
I just thank you for all the backup.
Yeah.
I appreciate the um analysis and looking at the averages um throughout the state's damage. We're all moving to something good up here. We're all.
A motion.
Move to amend the inspections department's schedule as of March first, twenty twenty four for the default computation on building permit fees based on construction cost to be squared up for condition space for one hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars per square foot. Garage space seventy five dollars to a hundred dollars per square foot. And deck supports fifty dollars to seventy five dollars per square foot.
Right, Miss Cantfield, who was second.
Second.
And Miss Harrison, help us in favor.
Aye.
Oh, you was nass. Deal. All right, we are a bit jigsaw when I say this, but we are.
Don't say it, don't say it.
Ready for the next person. Uh water resources, Bob, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, you can sit up here. Hopefully Bruce can join us.
There he is.
Look at that.
There he is. Oh, we can't hear him now.
We're gonna get the immune somehow. How you feeling?
Hey, thanks. Uh I feel okay. Uh I'm not quite up to coming in, but.
So glad you're feeling better.
Things are going well. Uh I just want to kick off briefly. Um we're glad to have the opportunity. This is our first update for the desalination subcommittee. Um you'll likely get another one later in the year as well as uh important issues come up. Um obviously, I want to be there in person, but Bob's there. He's gonna drive the presentation. Bob will outline this in in more detail, but I want to take this opportunity to say we're thrilled to have Situate residents with relevant uh and related experience and expertise who are uh committed to supporting this research effort. I know some of them might be in the room today, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank them for their participation. And uh with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Bruce. Um all right. Um back in May of twenty three, I think, we came before the board to see if we could put this committee together. Um you voted in the affirmative, which was terrific. And I think some of the reasons you did so may be somewhat obvious. We all had concerns about our water supply. Um much of the quality of our water is being addressed through the water treatment plant, but Situate like other states in the Commonwealth, like other states in the country, um like the rest of the world are concerned about their water resources. Between the time we met and today, I read that there are major desalination projects uh being undertaken in Spain, Italy, the United Kingdom. So everybody shares a concern. The other thing, we thought this, this is a good idea, using desalinated water as a way of augmenting our existing water resources was that we're right on the ocean. The other was that we have some untapped access to some terrific brain power across the river in Cambridge through MIT. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. The last point about being a test case, I think, sets us up maybe down the road, should a a project come to fruition um to maybe access um state funds or federal funds. I mean, think of it, if you're a politician and you're saying, in my district, in my state, we're addressing rising tides, we're addressing how to use a lot, utilize our resources, and we'd like to serve as a test case and share that learning with the rest of the country. That's a pretty powerful message that we hope that we can, we can share. Uh Bruce mentioned the the commitment that some of our citizens have given. It's been unbelievably beneficial, viable, not only for the conversations that we've had, but the ancillary conversations that they've had with other people where they brought that learning back into the group. We've had Rick Cohen, I don't know if Rick is on the call, it'll be a Zoom. Uh Rick was uh the head of the project of desalination at Hackley Country Club. Um James Newman, who was the only core of engineers that we have with us, Eric Sada and Mark Fenton. If you two guys would just like to introduce yourselves and just briefly about your background, so the group knows how beneficial you've been.
Me on the stage, huh?
Second.
Good evening. My name is Eric Sada. I was a lifelong resident of Boston until about five years ago, where I came out of this lovely community. I guess I, do I have to do stream any of that? My first cohort, so.
All right. Well, actually, I just had the address too for the.
Yeah, twenty-two Village Lane.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Thank you. Um I have spent the last fifteen years of my career selling exclusively uh equipments to cities and towns and water and wastewater treatment facilities, upgrading them, making them more reliable and efficient. And uh I got involved in, I don't know, something, evens or something with Bob down there. So I'm happy to help and lend my knowledge to this cause.
And I'm Mark Fenton, twenty-five president, uh longtime resident, over twenty-five years now, then served on planning and any number of other boards, committees in town, worked a lot on the waterfront planning that we had recent years. And of course, one of the topics that came up that is saltwater inundation even into our freshwater supply. So that even, and this was one of the many topics that we explored in the world to be the bills. This is really, really relevant to long-term planning in this country. That's all well done. And I could force to be an MIT-trained engineer, so I immediately connected with our our colleagues there on some of the technical questions, which are gonna end up being seminal to how this place out, I think.
Thank you. Um through the, the solo discussions we have, we 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 learned, and I think what we all understand, is that the desalination technology continues to evolve and improve. It's worldwide. It's gone from major plants that we envisioned in Tampa and we see in San Diego to buoy systems that exist off the coast and use current from the ocean and power from the waves to start the reverse osmosis process. So it can be as big as you want or as small as you want. We also know, and Jim had brought this up earlier when we spoke for the first time, that there are significant challenges when it comes to permitting, especially when you're trying to turn saltwater into drinking water, but also infrastructure costs. And I think I have these costs correct. Just the Hackley project alone, I'm gonna call it, it was about a five million dollar project. About three hundred thousand dollars was the actual machinery that was performing the reverse osmosis to desalinate the water. The other costs were the piping, the infrastructure, all of that that we know in a town like ours would be significant as related to any equipment you have at desalinated ocean water. We also know that we look at our community, you know, the water supply ebbs and flows, it rains, it snows. We have the summer residents, the water goes down, they need, the water goes back up. When you start thinking of those challenges to permitting and infrastructure, you say maybe a desalination process that's pure about desal- desalinity for drinking water may not be the best solution for us. That brings us to where we sort of are today, which is where it really starts to get interesting. Initiated by Bruce, there's been a lot of literature floating around from work we've done at MIT. Uh Bruce made contact with Professor Jung Yung Hong from MIT, who's a researcher focused on generating water flexibility, which we really like that concept. Uh Jung Yung Yun, and he insisted we call him Jay, and Bruce Crawford. Uh they are MIT grads, and I don't know if I shared it with this group, but there was an article recently about what they had done, and they had created desalination technology that was about the size of a briefcase. And they went to Carson Beach and stuck a hose in there and they sucked the water out and it went through their briefcase and it came out to be drinking water. They're looking to scale that up. And when you think about that briefcase and a major desalination plant in San Diego, somewhere in there is a sweet spot to serve a Situ- a a a town like Situate of twenty thousand residents. Not as big as this, not as small as this, but something in the middle that serves our purposes and could be more affordable and more easily um permissible. We had two Zoom calls. Uh one took place right after Thanksgiving, and we just had another a couple of weeks ago at the end of January. The the first Zoom call was more about getting acquainted with the MIT folks and having them get acquainted with us and some of our chat. The, the first Zoom call was more about getting acquainted with the MIT folks and having them get acquainted with us and some of our challenges. Um, the second call went a little bit more into things we can start together. They all recognized the challenges of doing something that's pure desalination in terms of cost and regulation, they spoke about that. They're driven, their research is driven by doing something that fits the needs of the community. Almost a custom approach, what works for you may not work for another town in South Carolina, but we can work with them to help meet their needs as well. The initial consensus was looking at Situates to focus on non-potable water, non-portable water, to substitute as demand for portable water in areas, especially in our town of recreation. When we talked to them about our marinas, and how do people clean their boats? And golf courses, how are they getting irrigated? And some industry that might be using valuable portable water that could easily substitute non-portable water. That started to lead us into a very different area. And as you start to think about that, it starts to sound a little bit less costly. It starts to sound a little less arduous when it comes to permitting. It seems to be a good step forward for a town like ours to say, hey, let's conserve as much of the valuable drinking water that we can and find another way of serving some of our recreation needs and business needs. Um, MIT wants to focus in that area. Um, they already have a technology that they call nanoparticle water monitoring that can tell you about decant, uh, contaminants in your water in real time. So it's not only desalinating, but also give you a read on the cleansing, the, the, the actual cleanliness of your water. They also understand how water treatment plant have an interest in learning more about that. And I was reading an article in Barcelona, they have a water treatment facility, and they, the EU has very strict rules like we do about converting, uh, treated water to drinking water. What they do with their water in Barcelona is it comes out of the water treatment facility, cleansed, it goes into a river, and they capture it upstream in the river and desalinate it and send it back in for drinking water. So there's very ingenious ways out there to start to use the water that we're generating that's fairly clean, I think, Jim, um, as ways to help, uh, serve this objective, uh, as we're working with MIT.
Yeah.
MIT, go ahead, Bruce.
Yes.
I want to go back to, uh, to the mobile aspect of this again.
Yes.
Um, they feel it's a key part of this. I want to make sure everybody understands, they have a technology that's, um, they've scaled it up a bit, but the end result of it is, is drinkable water. Now, they haven't put it through the permitting process, but, uh, you know, they're confident in that. But they do see, obviously, all sorts of issues. Um, Bob will get to this point a little later, they're also trying to start up a, a company. So their, their intent through this is to, um, scale up the technology. They see mobile applications as being important to, to kind of sidestep the, um, the infrastructure issues, running piping off all over the place. Um, and so there're gonna be opportunities, for example, we have in there marinas. Um, we don't need potable water to clean boats. We need good enough water to clean boats, although we still need potable water available in the marinas, for example. Um, you might also think about car washes. One, one of the issues, though, Water Resource Commission has, uh, you know, in drought periods, is sometimes there are car washes in town now. Um, we all like car washes, um, and those types of activities to generate money for, for great causes, but perhaps we have a, a car wash down in Cole Parkway, uh, where the boat ramp is, and this portable unit presets a bunch of water that can be used to wash cars in that location, for example. So there're gonna be opportunities like that that just kind of pop up as we go through this. Um, so that mobile aspect, I think, is a real important part of it. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Bruce, yeah, I missed that, because we've also seen some pictures of desalinating technology that was used out of a tractor trailer. So the mobility part is, is very real and very doable, and was a key part of what they were, what they were proposing for us. Um, MIT has 1.5 million in funding available spread over three years to do this work, to do this research, they'd like to work with us. Um, again, as Bruce said, to develop something that's scalable, that gives us good enough water, that helps us serve the recreation local business needs that don't need portable water, um, and would have that element of mobility, which really gets interesting. They've also identified four other towns within the Commonwealth that they're thinking of working with Plymouth, Chelsea, the Association to Protect Cape Cod, and the Mashpee-Wampanoah Tribe. All of those have different objectives. Um, some of them are economic, some of them are sea change issues, some of them are salinity issues. Um, but there's also us and four other communities within the Commonwealth that they would like to work with. When we left the call in January, uh, they were requesting a letter from us um, to Professor Han, so they can get their Robert Vincent, who manages their grant process at MIT, get him linked into what we're talking about. Um, Jim has approved our letter and approved our engagement, we have no financial commitment to any of this. The only thing that we're probably going to be fairly soon is a little bit of staff time um, for MIT to begin their work. There's some data that they're going to need from us, some of it is listed. Our pipe network, what do we know about contaminants, what do we know about how much water is being used at the marina at the golf course? So there's information that we're gonna be able, that we're gonna need to provide, uh, that hopefully our, our folks in town will often help us, uh, help us gather.
Yeah, hey, Bob, Bob.
Yes.
Couple, couple things. Um, so Situate is not committed financially in any way to support this. Um, just want to make sure we understand that, but there will be some staff time required. Bob and I are willing to do um, at least some of the groundwork, if you will, we'll need access to some data. But we want to try and insulate Kevin's, uh, water department as much as possible. But there will be some costs, staff costs associated with it.
Um, in conclusion, we're, we're very encouraged by this, uh, contact we've made with MIT. Um, in, in encourage in many ways, but specifically that it really aligns with the objectives that we sort of set out, that we're looking for ways to utilize the ocean water to augment our existing supply, partner with experts that are readily available to us and using us um, as a test case going forward for other coastal communities. If you have any questions or, um, you happy to answer them for myself or Bruce?
Right, again, first of all, thank you, uh, Bruce and Bob, everybody coming in. Exactly, sort of as we're looking for, I know you guys work so hard on this, but I'll save my comments till the end, so when they, uh, please.
Immediately wastewater treatment plant got my attention. Um, because I'm not sure, but Jim, our, the capacity is one thing, but we don't get measured on capacity so much as we get measured on what we send out, is that right? How does that work?
You have a capacity that the plant can treat.
Right.
And then you have a discharge permit, they're two different things.
Okay.
So we can treat a lot more source than we can actually discharge. So.
So.
A plant has capacity, you do not have discharge capacity.
But if this were to be able to work, is it possible that we could help us with the discharge? That we simply reroute it to this.
Well, they don't discharge. Right, so it, if you're diverting clean flow someplace else, it's not being discharged, which means that you free up discharge capacity.
Right.
But that, that's also an infrastructure issue in terms of how big, how do you get it from there to even up to the golf course? Last time I checked, the state wouldn't allow us to do that. Which is big in the West, these wastewater of golf courses, I don't think it's currently allowed.
If I, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, in, in answer to your question.
Yeah.
Um, so again, Mark Fenton, 25 Crescent, uh, under committee. What the professor and his team are, are proposing, I just want to make sure that it's clear, that that 1.5 million happens within the MIT Water and Food Systems Lab. And their very systems are, and they think about, to your point, it's not like exactly the kind of thing you're talking about. Their answer would not be desalinate all water you need. You use desalination very crudently for the really specific uses, but look at your outflow of the plant, which I think is something like one and a half million gallons a day here in the summer, and much higher, in that peak period. We, we heard some astonishing numbers, which, if properly prepared, would help lower your demand for fresh water for drinking, for example, by sending it to nearby locations. And our understanding is that there's real evolution in the kinds of laws that you were just talking about, supervisor, in the sense that we're starting to be much more thoughtful as a Commonwealth about how we should be using that kind of outflow. So think about a concrete plant that uses a lot of water, think about two golf courses that are not very distant, not required, nearly as much piping as trying to get, you know, all the way to North Situate or even, you know, the harbor, uh, or lots of residential areas. I think these guys, fundamental point is bring that system to you. They're gonna try to look at all of that. And your point about reducing, you know, taking outflow in a different direction so it doesn't become part of, goes into the North River, but using it productively elsewhere is an exact example of the system level solution they're talking about. By the way, one of the people he introduced us to on the last call was really a, a pathogen expert, if I'm remembering the terminology correctly, which would help us look at things like the water quality of our outflow, making sure we meet standards before you try to do things like water launch. So I think the short answer to your question is yes, that's the short answer, yes, that is possible, yeah.
Possibilities that have been unmet.
Yeah, I think all of us came out of those meetings thinking that's exactly what we're trying to build, all the tools, right?
Sure.
That's my first question.
Go ahead. Um, my question's on the process, you mentioned there's other communities that are interested or towns, um, and we've set up that, are, is that, are they looking to approve one town or work with all of them? Or what's our chances of work?
And did you get the, did you get that?
Yeah, we, uh, so, um, Bob mentioned the, the, Bob, I think the other Bob from the Sea Grand Organization had, had reached out directly to four other communities, the four other communities Bob put up before. He, he has an in-law in Situate, so he knew about Situate, but he didn't contact us. The, the fact that we're involved is because I reached out and contacted the professor. So the intent that we heard was to work with all the communities. They want to expose their technology to its, a range of water setups and issues that local communities face. So the intent is that, um, I get the sense that the other communities aren't quite as aggressive as we might be, but, um, time will tell. We sent in, um, the letter that Bob mentioned several weeks ago, we haven't heard about the next step. Now that I'm back from surgery, I'll start that process.
And one other question.
Sure.
All of the data that they're asking for, I'm assuming is stuff that we have, not that we have to.
I think we'll see a lot of examples.
Do something to acquire.
Yeah, a lot of product.
Okay.
So yeah, that was my first question too, was to earn, uh, the resources that will be required to do this, but if Jim's comfortable.
Yeah, I, I know exactly all the data we're looking for, most of the stuff that he's been describing, we would have.
We have it, yeah. First off, thank you for all the work on doing this. I think you're 100% right, that if we raise our hand and say, sure, we'll be there any day, and they wanted to do it, that that opens doors for us because we're, everybody else in the conversation. Uh, and I think that, you know, our board should be really looking for, exactly, those kind of opportunities, both resiliency and everything, but this is, this is the, you know, integral we're moving forward, um. I think you've answered the questions I had, I mean, obviously, next steps, I think you guys have done a great, laid the groundwork, um, and to have the, you know, to be able to tap into that kind of expertise, it answers really our questions. But we would have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to ask those questions, right? So I think we'd be a little foolish not to say, sure, we'll partner with you, and that's my, my counting on it. Um, you know, as long as, you know, we have the, we have the, we can't drop everything, but if we can answer the questions and turn it over to smart people to help us, that's awesome.
Thank you. And especially I'd like to thank Eric, whose third try comes due in a matter of hours.
I haven't got a phone call yet, I heard a text from, still talking city by the door.
Thank you, you're nice, it's like he's ready to go.
Ready to go, I'll be running right out there, we're, we're good, it's not a problem.
Thank you, I, I will admit, at first I was nervous that we're gonna kind of be, we have $3 billion big Dsal. There's a great old, uh, adage that we've said before, I love the art of the possible. And this is the art of the possible, what's actually doable and can actually get done, and that's certainly the right direction, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to be these proverbial scum at the God and body.
Yeah.
Words that DEP wastewater and drinking water do not like to hear, experimental, cutting-edge, do. Those are things they don't like to hear when you're talking about wastewater, drinking water. So as, as you mentioned, the permitting hurdles, when we get to that point, are gonna be.
See, I'm not hearing that, I'm not hearing.
From that side.
Going to drinking water, I'm hearing something far different, honestly.
Yeah, so they might. The MIT folks feel confident about their ability to cleanse the water, but they don't want to kind of force their way into that morass of, uh, of regulation. So that's why they want to scale up the technology using, using the water for non-potable activities.
Right. Honestly, we do nothing but have the marinas be able to use this technology. The reduction of our load in the town will be so significant.
Precisely, exactly, that's why they're gonna do this system level analysis. When you start to look at the ins and outflows, and you start to see those kind of numbers for watering golf courses for that matter, beer game golf courses, you start to see big numbers, put a handle on it, that's what he said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alrighty. You.
Thanks, Bruce, thank you.
You feel better, Bruce, a little better.
Thank you.
Great.
Alright. Jim, what about the food pantry licenses, or maybe Nancy, I don't know.
No, this is made, uh, food pantry licenses is getting ready to expire since it's a one-year renewal with options. The only change to the lease, uh, Kevin Kelly will look me up the trash use. They generate about 40% of the dust use, so we've made a change to the lease to basically charge them for 40% of the monthly dust use. They're fine with it, uh, no other changes to the rent, uh, any other uses. So really, trying to get a little money for the trash, to make sure that they have some time to then, when they continue to track the bill for part of help.
I'm Sue McMan, I'm the new operations manager for Food Pantry. I just started this job a month, so.
Alright, she has her own end.
Welcome, thanks, so they have to come.
I guess you have big shoes to fill.
Very big, but.
I'm sure you will.
It's a well-run organization, very proud of it.
Ray, I'm, I'm chair, I can ask you.
You can say anything you want.
It's on topic, but tell me, I know we always hear it a few more times about the need, but what, what are we seeing up there for need, is this? I just, I want the folks to know how important it is, these donations, and for folks.
Well, I've only been there a little more than a year, um, but every month we're adding up to a half a dozen new clients, whether it's a single person or a family. Line numbers that I'm told, but I have to kind of confirm at some point, is up to 500 individuals. I mean, it's some families, um, we service, like today, we have 21 drive-up people, sometimes we have, um, two, three, seven, 30, and that, as individuals or families, um, uh, Thursday afternoons, we have up to 20 to 25 home deliveries that will take every other week. They, and then drive-ups are anywhere from 15 to 20, they're increasing slowly. They, and then drive-ups are anywhere from fifteen to twenty, they're increasing slowly from even a few years ago. And as far as the poundage of who we go, who I can't give you an exact number, but it's a lot.
I'll swing in for the gut check.
But we're very fortunate that, um, local stores, Stock and Shop gives a school twice a week. Shaw's comes to meet, Trader goes and he'll, her bar, Fresh Market orders certain things for us. Um, then the local just, Calory School did a special donation collection force, seaside initiative collection force basically. Um, so people are very generous and it really does help. It's, and being at Gates has really helped Food pantry service clients with the cafeteria setup and the kitchen setup. We get fresh produce from local farms and people that drop it off, you know, spring some. It's definitely serving a need.
Yeah.
We're trying to find ways to get the word out even more. A lot of people are embarrassed, you know, ashamed, um, even in town.
Well, I just want to say that I think Food pantry brings a lot to, to, uh, the life of that area. I think it's nice to have yet another move there in addition to the senior center and the rec center. So it's, it's kind of formed a nice community there. And I know that there's a little back and forth between the senior center and the pantry sometimes. So, um, I, I think it's a great location for it. I wish we could keep it there, but I know we have to consider what to do with that entire building. So, but in the meantime, I can't think of a better use for it. Yeah, they are welcome, thank you for stepping in, if you believe, um, yeah, my, the concerns, uh, that I would have are the same ones we had in the first business. And the flexibility, we don't always have, but the lease destruction such that, you know, we all know. We can do that, so, uh, I think it's, the amendments are appropriate and should support that. Sure. Not gonna, not gonna throw you up yet, but it should be in the back of your mind that, you know.
Oh, we're definitely talking about it. From years ago, the, the need and the space given was really served versus going back to a smaller room or whatever.
It's great, you're totally list.
I agree, it's a park, it's actually a parking space with an, with a kitchen and all the freezer space and fridge space, surprise space. So I'm glad that it can be used for a town being.
Well, move to.
Move to board license, would you like to, move to board licensing agreement to the food pantry for one-year period, promising April second, twenty twenty-four, for April fourth, fifth. But with, um, I just want to reference the lease itself is in the two-year extension, not to one-year. Is that correct? Is that what I read?
Should be two one-years.
I think it said that the, the actual language was it's a option to do a two-year extension.
Be two one-years, I forgot that.
Pardon?
Should be two one-year extensions.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
One in the line, that's what I thought. Okay, I have, alright, well, let's.
I'll go back, double check that that was, supposed to be two one-year extension.
Okay, I thought it was only two years. So with two possible one-year extensions at nine hundred one for a portion of the park that located at three twenty-seven, first parish road, and then it's the old gates, it's a two-year at school. Seven.
Ms. Cantor, say what I missed, hungrily, no more further discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, you have a statement.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Definitely appreciate it. Alright, next, special and annual, sorry.
No, the term is not to extend two years, so it could be one year, six months.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Now meeting.
Alright, so the first item on top meeting is removal of, uh, several items from special time meeting, annual time meeting articles. Uh, there are actually one, two, three, four, five, six to be rescinded, so I can catch up on, go back here, please. To be taken off the special time meeting article. Grant match for the Gitch generator, that can wait till the fall, man is still in progress. Decision of borrowing authorizations. We needed some information and some votes from the building committee, which have targeted to close on some of those projects. Again, those can wait. Emergency snow, storm, ice and gull cost. We're in good shape right now, we can handle a, a storm, obviously we didn't get disasters around the city right now. Uh, we feel there's sufficient funds to handle whatever we need to handle, you know, end of the year. And then two grant easements, uh, that would be part of the water treatment plant, they just aren't together yet. We're ready for time meeting, so we're looking for our top form. That's special time meeting, uh, and then the annual time meeting, Nancy went back and forth with council on this. This was suggested amendment to our overnight parking, it's a case before the SJC now. Uh, so council just said we should wait, suit up with their case and fix it based on that.
What's the case with SJC? Last I heard, I thought we edited that.
We had, I never went to court, I was like the attorney general.
Yeah.
Uh, we made some changes based on the attorney general order, then there's more suggested changes. Now there's a case before the SJC, not ours.
Yeah.
Must be similar enough, the council just said, hey, I'll just wait till the court does.
Said it had more.
Oh, it'd be prudent.
Well, the other issue we're gonna have down, we're gonna have to deal with at some point is not proliferation of commercial vehicles that are parking there. Multiple commercial vehicles that are parking there overnight, it's possible. Not necessarily a commercial vehicle, it's a fisherman, so. I'm talking some, some fishermen on the trucks. I'm talking about this, we should.
So on the overnight vehicular, um, does the AG send it back to us and pull us to edit it? Do we have to then communicate with the AG's office that we're waiting on SJC?
Those are.
I don't think it care.
Yeah.
We know, do it, we know, do it.
Oh, it's, it's, the bylaw is in place.
The whole bylaw.
No, the one.
Oh, the new one.
They approved it, they just suggested some.
Tweaks.
Tweaks.
Gotcha, okay.
Those tweaks are what the town council were asking us to hold on.
Gotcha, okay.
And if we do nothing, we're just waiting, that's all.
No, we have a, we have a bylaw in place and we can force it.
Right.
We have a bylaw in place.
So what's the marketing issue with it, Marshall?
Commercial vehicles. Large commercial vehicles, large trunks.
Okay.
Address that later.
I don't know if it's one.
Another time, not now.
Alright, so that all makes sense to me, your question, yes.
My question, the easements, were they with the state or are they tied?
Utility.
Utility.
I'm sorry, say that.
Utility easements.
Oh, utility, like, thank you. Thank you.
Motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry. The utility easement or we need the east?
We need to give back.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Motion, yes. I want to interrupt you again.
No, I'm sorry, I do.
Move to remove, move to remove. The grant not match article, rescission of borrowing optimizations article, emergency storm article, and the two granted utility easement articles from the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four special time meeting, and further to remove the articles from then the general bylaw section relevant to overnight recreation of vehicle parking on town council's recommendation from the April eighth, twenty twenty-four annual time meeting. Second.
Ms. Cantor, say that, Ms. Cantor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Ms. Candor. Right, next.
So, yeah, the background information really summarizes what we're looking at here. We made the changes coming out of the MMA for the actual health insurance. We've been at ten percent, the health insurance was fine before. Uh, we made an adjustment for the small amount of additional money we're getting in state aid. We adjusted the MOTEC for the actual assessment, so we picked up above four hundred seventy-two thousand on including inspectors. And includes the money that were participating from the inspectors by a vote of the financial forecast, forecast committee, that money is not being divided next year. We get to keep all that, and then it goes to the pot. So that left us above four hundred thousand of the original putback, we made a lot of different reductions. We stored quite a bit of those going forward. Uh, two of the big changes, uh, road and seawalls. We just couldn't do that to the budget this year, so we're looking at one-time allegations from. We went into the solar rate and then our FACS, uh, program, our federal grants are expiring. So we are usually, as we talked about, I don't know how long ago, months and months of years ago, money we're getting from the opioid settlement will be transferred in to split the FACS budget. Those are the big changes, and then a lot of the smaller, I don't know if we want to go through them more of the time or. You see, there's always this vital information that you possibly need.
So I have a question on the opioid settlement, because those are the articles in the world that like no one's used their money. Um, and partly it's no one has used that money, it wasn't about what is being allocated. So Situate had a big zero in, in the article, so I think people should know that, like, it takes money, it takes time to allocate and spend, but we're in a process, we have been in the process of spending.
Well, we, we have explained it all along, we knew that we were on our second federal grant, we weren't gonna get any more federal grants, we'll only get two.
Right.
Uh, so when this opioid settlement came along, the first thing that came in my head, Nancy said was, this is perfect, we can use this and kind of wean ourselves off it without having just all of a sudden come up with the entire appropriations fund FACS, because I don't think anybody wants to stop funding that organization. Uh, so this was perfect, so, you know, I talked to one of the reporters, I said, we have a plan. We're just waiting for, for the grant to go away, then we're gonna continue to fund that substance abuse program in town, so.
So is the opioid, opioid settlement a one-time fusion or is it, you're, so that?
Because we might come in for quite a while.
Quite a while, I would say it's the one, or is it?
This is like the first.
It's the first tranches, several, there's a CBS one, there's a FOMO one, and there's multiple ones.
So we could conceivably fund FACS for quite a while with that.
What we'll probably do is kind of start weaning ourselves off gradually, less and less reliance on that. Which is up to the project, because we just started, other than plus thousands, I'll tell you.
A lot of support to this thing.
Yep.
I know the question's about, was very, very, very clear, so. It's, uh, it's nice to be able to put in there almost a million dollars back.
Well, there. Help me, sir.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't know where we are in this process, but it looks to me as though town side, we get no new positions.
We're running with positions funded. Uh, we have some additional hours in our office from the maritime side of money, because we just can't keep up with all the, some things like that, but there are new positions funded in this one. We actually had to put some additional money in the police budget. Uh, we came out of civil service, Mark was able to fill three vacancies in two weeks with transfers, which is great. Uh, however, from a budget standpoint, there's that here, it's got a step there, so we had to transfer some money to cover that. Plus free new uniforms, school offices, things like that, so. Uh, but it was great to be able to just retrain officers, ready to go, industry, we're all working, like, the answer is just right.
And we still haven't even, the director of planning development, it's been open for a while.
We did, one set of interviews, we didn't find any that was quite the fit we wanted. Uh, so we're gonna go, I talked to Bob yesterday, we're gonna go back on that and see if we can do a little bit of this time, let's see if we can break it down.
Right, so help me feel better about this. So ask me, a year ago, we were down six police officers, so we're adding three. How many years off do you think we are, that we're gonna get back to where chief has recommended we be?
We're never, you're never gonna be fully staffed. You're always gonna have vacancy or time and a chance to, uh, but these three fill a big hole. Now we have an issue that now we're short because of lots of, some help, that's additional help. We're probably, you have to check with the chief, but we're probably still down two or three.
Okay.
That's, you're always gonna have one or two thousand around the summer, the time, so definitely. But this, this really takes a lot of the law.
It's anything, it's a step in the right direction. Getting closer to being able, again, there's always gonna be.
The board's made two changes in the, in the last two contracts. Two contracts ago, uh, we've been staying at the Quinville, the educational incentive. That was a big thing that was preventing us from recruiting new officers and transfers, a lot of times going out there, education, that's not the big change. And then as the board's aware, the contract ended with this year, um, it was a generous contract, trying to catch us back up with our peers. So now, pace here, we're in the right place, on the educational incentive, we're in the right place. It's a great department, it's great leadership, that's great morale, so I think we're very attractive. And with the added, no longer meaning civil service, uh, it opens up a whole new vision for people to just take this chance. Sorry.
Well, I just have to say I'm disappointed. Um, I was hoping we'd be able to do more on the personnel side, but it wouldn't miss.
Well.
And what the more was the library in the senior center, right? What was the tree?
Please, senior center.
I think it's.
Center, library.
Senior library, DBW.
It was, it was a long list.
It is a long, we have it, we insentiate, I can go find it.
I, 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 you can call it.
Eleven, twelve, fourteen.
It was clearly a very long list because of this wish list. But, um, you know, I was sort of hoping to get a few, I don't know, but, yeah, sort of none. And you can tell me what you want about the additional hours, but.
Yeah, the budget's just not gonna support it.
Right, right.
Revenue, the new growth, and the state aid, everything is just starting to slow down, so. We really haven't, ain't been adding a lot of staff in six years I've been here. Eighteen.
So.
Facilities are really, good place to add.
Well, I'll just say out loud, but I think a lot of other people are thinking that, you know, we've seen the schools hire and hire and hire. And, um, we're, you know, here at town hall with a pretty lean.
We, we've got a fairly lean operation.
Yes, yes you do.
You do.
But.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, no, I mean, I'll, I'll echo that concern. It was quite easy to take away seawall outside of our project, over four hundred thousand. Well, my concern is that we're, we're, especially the senior center. This is, let's be honest with demographics, it's a grand community, anyone you look at the demographics, the need is, uh, increasing. Um, in that population, we took it out, which folks are there. But I, I feel like shared concern, want to make sure that providing.
The services.
Services, uh, folks need and they expect and want, especially when we, you know, pay so much in taxes, just want to make sure that, uh, the rest of the people's back.
When's our budget vote today? When's our budget vote?
Today?
It is today. I see a blue.
Sorry.
Alright. Well, I guess we do have a question. Do you want to wait for more to weigh in, so we can just get, so you have some of these votes?
You can put it again, warm it up, get ready, you can go. Tommy was a lot closer than.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
A month, week, hell.
Unless you want to add a meeting, if I should be doing this during the study.
I, I just, I don't, you know, can't tell no harm, well, maybe speaker before she might film the chat.
Yes.
So, right, so I, that was always the intent, right? Was we were gonna draw the presentations, get your recommendations, come to this point, and go back and look at the things that we identified as priorities, to see if they have been addressed. And as Miss Conley said, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to make, to look at what the service, you know, the assessment of what the services would accommodate, and what our responsibility is within the budget. I think that if the budget you built, addresses the core things of keep the water, keep the sewer, keep the.
And maintains the current service model, but not by additional services. But the top two.
Which, by definition, if the service, if service demand has increased, we're obligated to do that.
Not necessarily. It really hasn't what, what people are looking for, I mean. We're not adding any programs at the council agent. We have, well, people sell the programs that have run out. Yes, a solid program full, yes. Uh, we did add the outside, the outside of memory care, we have that. Here, so that was team base. They gave me a head job, so. So the goal always is to start making sure you're not losing anything, not cutting any, losing any services, and try to add services on top of that. As Angel know, we had our first financial forecast, we said, we didn't hopefully be able to maintain our service in the long period.
Right.
Because of what we're looking at for opposite percent health, which shows how much stuff, so. The town is gonna have some, we're gonna have some serious discussions by the summer about where we wanna go, what we wanna do. Council aging is one of those places where you wouldn't say, staff hasn't increased tremendously since we moved with the new building, yet the amount of people we're servicing is, got exponential. If more people do the lunch, yep, subsidize the lunch, that's something we'll always subsidize, but, if they wanna run a new program, say in the library, any of the programs we have, but not available. We move from the types of people that's just.
So you think for the existing budget, the library won't have to cut, cut hours?
That's a discussion they're gonna wanna have with you. I'm not convinced they have to. If they're doing it now, I'm not sure why they don't have the kind of back to say, staff, budget, that's a conversation that won't happen.
For the next budget, or for this budget?
Well, no.
Thanks, Tom. Yep.
I mean, uh, you have a budget that funds what you have now, I know what you have, that offer less services than what they're offering. Staff works out, they're, they're special, they're, they're on this, a lot of things, we're, we're constantly doing, we're doing. Without a reduction in the budget, any department agent can say, well, we're gonna do less. No, because you've been funded at the level you need to keep doing what you're doing. It's the DPW, all of a sudden, we bought five hundred acres of fields that needed to be built, okay, well, this is gonna go away, because we're gonna have to move all those fields, and we can't do this, this, and this. But if you have the budget that meets your current needs, I don't know why you'd say, we're gonna do less with what basically I asked for. But to me, I, I sometimes defend that.
One other question that I had, was like, I don't have a full backup, but that was. Why are we budgeting for interest income this year?
For what?
Interest income. Because I was just looking at.
A conservative number, because it is gonna go back down, and it's starting to go back down.
Well, that was my question, because when we look at the, the, some of our expectations, we get robust.
It's quite robust right now, when you look at the local receipts and the monthly reports I give you, you'll see a lot of negatives. A lot of things are not as robust as that, that's the thing, it's helping us feed our local receipts.
Well, that was exactly the question, is how do we rely?
We did drink a little bit.
Not much.
If I went to, maybe, I think thirty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Our revenue estimates across the board, very visceral. The reasons why Nancy just said, because sometimes something doesn't work, something else does. There was rumors about nine C cuts coming in, state, so if you wanna make sure that you're, first thing they do when they have nine C cuts, the bottom revenue cost is, what are you gonna do? I think they made up, and the answer for the situation would be, we're very conservative, and our revenue estimates, we're confident that our locally seeds will make up whatever you're paying us. I mean, locally, if you go half to the back of these budgets.
Yeah, it just, I was looking at your directors, the student, or scout. That's correct.
Well, that's cool.
Comfortable or not, that's. Right, present. Yeah, I just have a question on, on the regional school. Does the social and tech, does the town pay that, or does that, that amount of the school budget?
So shared costs.
Shared cost meaning?
Uh, so we do our financial forecast, we do all our revenue.
Yeah.
And then we have a series of shared costs, health insurance, social, tech, outbuildings, everything like that, shared cost. Those then come out, and once the last gets divided, it's down to schools, so it's shared cost, cut apart the line.
But it's, it's not in the school budget, you say?
Not in the school budget.
Okay.
We'll be going to the school's.
Yeah.
Now, when, when that school spending is done, when we talk about how should we spend on the schools, those shared costs that are the schools, like their health insurance, well, that, that gets re-allocated to them in the finals that we go with the state. So it does get attributed to them, not just education, but it does not come out of their budget.
So the school department does not have to worry about social and tech?
I, I think the, the school department is very supportive of social and tech, and they, they think it's a great alternative for people who might not fit.
It takes some kids out there.
But, um, we've been going up lately, in the, the past, we haven't hit on number, in the most of the number.
I think it's good, but it's, it's going up, but I just wanna be sure that it's fair, that they get, the school department gets money, they don't have to pay for the kids that are going to sit to go tech. The town pays for that.
It comes, it comes off the top, yeah.
Yeah.
Comes off the top.
So. A discussion for one.
Yes. So I'll, I'll, I mean, I'll ask, great. GPW engineers, seventy-six thousand, that's it. It's a thought process, I've had that.
We're actually short an engineer right now, an engineer retired, so we're missing an engineer. It's really left hand or right hand. If we had another engineer, then we might be able to reduce our reliance on project engineers. When we do a project, we could have a lot of our engineers do it as opposed to paying to do the project. We have some more proactive design work, things like that, but, Ty would be the first place I'd go if I was adding people anyways, because I do have the option of having project engineers and hiring out. You know, for me, and probably going to look back and thinking of council aging, outside public safety. Yeah, I'd probably be looking, giving the council agents some extra help to keep up the demand, but, but again, the thing with the engineers, we can make good use of an additional engineer when I have other options that I can use as opposed to the law.
And so Nancy, do you mean, how many data, how much, you should do on those contract engineers or?
It's usually the studies of the contract, right? So while the contractor, we're engineers, we're engineers, you did the mainstream project, we had Dan Smith on it, on the engineer, as Dan's an engineer, he was retired, and so we saved that. I spent it out of the project costs. Seawalls, choose your, choose your project engineer.
Probably, I'm just curious about average, with a, with a hundred, so with a hundred thousand.
About that's practically, I think, the next, I think, they're about to, they're just, they just, they just, they're just doing it.
I'm, I'm just trying to remember the last role we actually had, some of the doing it, we did, I just can't think of it.
The role of thumb, design and engineer could be as quite a set of project costs, just as a general.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, you did have someone, you did have to hire, but, not equal out, but, you had used them.
Dan was on the water project, Jeff was on gas projects, road projects all year, and Sean is, Sean's on the design projects, designing the steel, also the central station, which you can imagine, consistent with. So it's definitely something that we could use, it wouldn't be my highest, my highest priority in terms of, you know, the only problem.
So if it wasn't at least your hire, could be senior center.
Oh, senior center.
What was that number again?
Senior.
It's like around one.
Whether that, that's.
That's what's. One oh seven? Well, this is the time. Ask around, what is important, we have a, a senior center. Right, I mean, this is our time to talk about.
That's the time when I ask the question.
If we had to, we're, so Joe, if we said this is, we're gonna die in this hill tonight, Joe.
He might.
How would that, what would you do? Sidewalks, seawalls, again, I'm just trying to think.
We inadvertently left the fifty thousand dollars off the additional inspections that we're trying to work on, it was supposed to be a project that you, but directly a plan, and I, and how you're doing, so I'm actually gonna hire outside of that. Position we haven't filled that, I might build there first, against a lot of it, I know that was a priority of one, but I might build a, for a day or something else on that. And you'd probably go to, some of the other, yeah, I'd probably then go, be public builders, make a best plan for the day. Take ten thousand out of contract, buy it, and, and last, and we'll, we'll fill it up for a little bit.
So what is this for? If you had to pick, top four, I was gonna say DPW or council agent. Those are my top two, but, we're used, we're new, folks, to the biggest view.
It sounds like there's a solution, not remaining that, that, that's the hardest.
Wait, I'm, I'm, yeah, coming in.
Yeah. Now we gotta decide between an assistant TA and a.
That was not the assistant TA, it's the inspections, we put money in, the board put money in this year for inspections.
Oh, inspection.
Enforcement, I think.
Yeah.
Enforcement. And that was gonna be the first task that they do, assistant, to go in and figure out how to use that money, make sure you're doing enforcement, efficiently, effectively, properly, plan. But we haven't filled it yet. It's still kind of nebulous. So what do you want, that law of actual body over here? I mean, that's just, it's an easy place to go, because it hasn't built, built, I, I don't have a plan for the next, they're not able to get into it to fill up my need, so it's something that we could do later if we wanted to, once we have a problem with the solution. Now, we had this conversation last year, the board was funding it without a solution, and it was money, let's find a solution, I'll do the, the other way, find a solution to figure out.
Well, as I recall that conversation, I think our issue was that professional people that were paying professional salaries to, in conservation and, uh, the planning board, and they're not, they're not doing any enforcement, or they are doing any enforcement, and therefore they're not doing the bigger picture stuff. So that's my recollection of why we thought it was a good idea, and that it could be to share between Congress and.
And, and what was a building also, right, with building, the zoning enforcement.
Well, it, it wound up in building.
The building was the inspection jet.
And we still hadn't had a planning and development director, so I think that that person, whoever that person's supposed to be, could have fit into the overall planning and development.
Could have come with that.
Right, right. Because I think it's a shame that, you know, as I say, we've got professional people who are, in few cases, running out to do enforcement instead of trying to move the law forward.
But they, they're the ones that have to do the enforcement, because they're the motion of the orders, but, director of planning and development slash assistant administrator, one of the things they could do is take some of the, administrative lift, take some of the dealing with the hiring, public lift off their hands, and they're kind of being the, the goings, we usually like to focus, focus more on the actual work they have to do as opposed to.
Right.
It's not fair, why do I have to, I'm the guy.
Right.
And also, you know, there's a lot of tugging back and forth between planning and conservation and building. I think we're in that position to kind of say, okay, we're gonna, you know, I always just example, the normal forty-five home subdivision, planning board assisted up two ways in and out of conservation commission, kept sending one.
Yeah.
They develop this like. When I care, which I need to know, so we have to fight you, so we have to. But I mean, that's, because that gets you most of the way there, thinking that, that position.
Oh, was that really a position, or was it contracting of, it was to be in front of the book? And if, the opportunity cost, if you, if the way that, three of those, we want that much, you know we want that much, is if we were to put somebody in management agency in the budget, down, downstream, we get a position where we can actually activate the enforcement, any extra money. At that point, one of the things we may have is a better revenue picture, people to, to, if we're so conservative with our revenue. I'm just living, I just don't wanna be something that's who was, that we don't sustain, or make the ease of the board.
We might have some salary savings, staff changes, which we have now, and we think it's salary savings, there, we don't have, we have more to do for that, we have the conservation commission position tomorrow. It's been a little challenging to schedule those interviews, because I do wanna remember the commission interviewing with me, was what they're looking for, and I'm looking for actually two different things. So it's been hard to get on the chickens in the same room, but if there's a potential savings salary wise on that, who we hire, who we're paying for, and then as we look at, I don't wanna get too deeply into maybe some restructuring that we're responding to.
So. Well, I guess I'm, I'm gonna back to, you know, where do you go most, where's the biggest service need?
Well, I still have the question of, uh, the police department issue related to the, that we can't do part-time seasonal anymore. I mean, that seemed like it was even a year ago. He was raising it to us as a major concern, and while I recognize that he could fill three of the open positions, it's still, it's still not, and, and, and it may also be, I mean, I'm not in favor of creating a position that you can't, then can't fill, because of the labor market being the way it is, or, I think it helps that we got through the civil service thing in the police department.
Yes, it'd be difficult to, to fill those positions right now, because we're sat in trouble finding the positions we have.
Right.
Things like that, so it could be mine, just kind of sitting there. And I'm not sure adding one. First of all, it's one of the most expensive positions we have, it's over a hundred thousand dollars, it's better than. And just adding one additional patrol officer, I just don't see it having the type of impact that, having the addition. When I look at what's gonna have the most impact on the most amount of people in a tangible way, having someone else to council agent, that's again, you built a giant facility that uses up your medicine, really having a whole lot on staff.
And what was the council agent position on the end, which was?
Assistant, assistant director. It's just the director. Was the, one, because the other one was media having to do with.
Yeah, the turn nine, which.
It was the assistant director, assistant director.
Living needs help.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, because she's wonderful, she's up to a good job.
Oh, no, it's just.
There's just a tremendous amount more going on than there was on the downtown portion. Some needs to, things to lift off, and just the day to day stuff, but.
Sounds like a need.
Yeah. So I think the bottom line on this, this effort, one of the requests we asked, very valid reason for the issue. There was, there was maybe one and a half positions that were like, we'd be nice to ask, and these were all a bit of. there was, there was maybe one and a half positions that were like, we'd be nice to ask, and these were all a bit of I think you're absolutely right that if you look at our demographics, where we're headed, um, you know, council agent serves two different audiences, the young old and the old. If you don't call it that, I really have something to say, but it's basically, you know, my age to, you know, people that wanna play the technical, and one of you, you know, that are more active, but and then seniors, then the memory fair, and, you know, that stuff. So we know from our demographics that people are exactly right, that that's an area that's not going to be leaked, I think. Um, we'll have to address the site issues, that's an whole entire different issue. If I look at all of the different things I get through the gym that be, I would propose, for meeting with the council agent. And tomorrow, they would be, they would be
The site issues, Drew's actually hitting a lot of that with the Triton grant.
Yes.
Uh, with the Triton grant that he's been doing with the water health, that has condition health, I think. Or one of them was at the library, right? They talked about, they committed here.
You talked about social
Yeah, those items at the library, so they, they've gotten a lot of that to, uh, Triton water health. So, I know they, they talked about, they had, it's actually, I was at the library. I was saying that, we're not a library. So, so, and that's a huge conversation.
And you're not certain that adding this person is, two years from now, you're gonna be letting someone go?
You know, I'm always concerned that two years from now, I'm gonna let someone go, whether I had someone or not.
Right, right, I mean
Which is why
The whole budget tanks.
You know, getting, six years that I've been there, we had the H D A C person, we added a pure person. Can't think of any other positions we've added, because I don't like to be, oh, yeah, it's not adding positions when I don't think it's going good, you know, good growth, good everything, that's not sustainable, so I'll add for what you have, add for what you see in the future. I don't know, just the ball, it's gonna get difficult all the next couple of years, it'll be the budget's gonna be tight in the next couple of years. That's just stay catch the cold, we, we get in moments.
The other factor on this particular article is, is succession, succession, I mean Linda has made it clear that, you know, she's, she's doing a great job, but we don't wanna push her out the door at all. But, you know, she's concerned that she gets somebody to turn the page, so it's good. So that actually gives us a lot of depth, if, if we are, we have the moment, and that's there, we made it straight up. I think that's right, I mean, like I said, the last one I want to see us do is add positions beyond the best year. Either ask them for an old garage, which I thought we avoided this year, um, aside from the giant school up here. So, you know, at least we can revisit this every year. I just, I just was disappointed that we couldn't fill what people need, that I would, I would say that property seems place to be, who can squeeze it out, something else.
I mean, just once in my career, I like to do a budget, you say?
Yep, 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 yep. Would that be your top?
Not to
Shouldn't that, that be your top choice?
Yeah, I mean, I think the majority of the, I mean, the majority, the prime majority that went requested all had merit. The only two or a couple that weren't like redundant, just because we had hired a, um, media person, and they saw a need for media, and we were kind of part of things around. But, um, I think as far as sustainability, um, needs, impact, so that our, like, the residents will, like, see the impact of adding somebody there. And succession thing, as a path, um, that's the position, if you had to pick one. I mean, I, again, I also see needs in the library too, um, so that might be something to think about in the future. And then, if we can do something, I'll go with that.
So Jim, I, I agree with you, I think the next few years are gonna be, I think, I think it's tough. Maybe we're gonna look at other solutions for funding, and whether that's gonna come because of the bargaining, or whatever happens, um. I also think, though, we can make this work. Right, because the total is seventy-nine, and the benefits.
Don't worry about the benefits. I didn't say that. So what's the total?
So I think I'm here that would like to hire this person, would like to have that. How do we make that happen?
So relocate the, we allocate the fifty thousand from inspections to ten thousand from traction lobbying into that line, and then make up the rest to the
Does the board feel about that? Nervous about
Well, I'm not happy about the inspection thing, I think we should have made that work, but, um, I can certainly see if we haven't done it yet. But having that money out there and not using it, it's rather a good use.
But there's also a possibility with the new hire, um
Right.
That that, that the inspections may happen.
Could be the way to skin
Communication within the department may be different, different staff.
Well, and knowing that's presented to whoever this person is, it's a challenge for you.
I mean, I, I had a plan This plan was the PR person, and then the assistant director of planning. Slide into that. I can choose, constantly
Yep.
Uncomfortable, but, well, my, okay? It's a good spot to do, I'm in the same boat, uncomfortable, but both.
Yes.
So, can I get a motion to accept this operating budget with the change of adding in a new council and aging assistant director, and making the reductions of fifty thousand dollars from planning?
Inspections.
No, inspections, excuse me. For, for hundred dollars inspections.
Second, you just made the motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Miss Harrison.
Second by Miss Harrison, excuse me, I'm sorry. Second by Miss Harrison. Any further discussion?
Well, we have another motion, the budget.
Well, this
Just an add.
This will, this will vote for amend this, and then they'll vote, it doesn't change, it numbers the
No.
The motion.
Right, so, that is the amendment.
Well, this, this is separate vote. So, just go with the vote.
Vote the amendment, vote the motion, then
So you have a motion. We just need to have the motion. To second the budget.
That's been seconded, so this is just the amendment.
The amendment rejected.
The amendment rejected budgets. Seconded by, is Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That amendment is unanimously approved. That will go to
I'm just gonna go ahead and have this. The motion to amend the projected budget to add assistant director to council on aging in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand from inspections.
Where are sixty?
And
Ten thousand from collective
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, ten thousand.
Ten thousand from collective bonding and collective bargaining.
On a contract bond, actually.
And we have to move to amend it based on that.
Okay, motion by, I'm sorry, it was, uh Mr. Conley.
Yes, I was saying
Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Ms. Harris.
Sorry.
No. Those
And now we have the motion for the budget itself.
So
Well, don't we also, we already voted, uh, that we both did that in the contrary.
So, this, just move this, move to approve the town administrator recommended FY twenty-five general fund operating budget as amended. Addition of and because the total's not changing, just move it around.
I would love that.
Motion for the town administrator for general fund operating budget, or as amended, um, with the additions of four hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars for available funds, two hundred thousand for the municipal housing fund, two hundred thousand for the solar or regular housing fund, and a hundred and four thousand, one hundred and six dollars for the opioid stabilization fund. Total increase of nine hundred eighty-seven dollars, five hundred ninety-eight dollars, seven.
Moving this, can't feel seconded by Ms. Conley, any other discussions? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Right. Waterways enterprise funds, I think the other one will go.
So this is just a suggestion, the board can take it up now, or we can wait, if we something to do in the fall, if we need to. Uh, but if we are going to be overseeing moorings or acid, that will take some additional staff time, because they gotta run all their back. So we have suggested putting an additional ten thousand dollars into season salaries. But again, we can do it now, or we can wait, and if it actually comes to pass, we're gonna go to the town agent, spring, and it'll follow, and fill it up, while they put it before you to give you that option.
I want, want acid to know this seriously.
Yeah.
So I wanna send a message that we are doing this.
So I, one of the reasons to say so.
Yes.
Yes, I'm part of Chris's race, and we're, we're waiting for nothing, we're moving forward.
Yeah.
We're waiting for nothing.
I don't understand.
We're not Chris's.
We have a motion.
We're like
It's seventy-six.
I get it.
I know, I just can't
Hold on, hold on.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Move to include an additional ten thousand for FY twenty-five waterways enterprise seasonal salary line in Article Five, April twenty-four, in a town meeting for potential patrol costs for moorings and coacid harbor, second.
By Ms. Harrison, second by Ms. Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Yanis.
Uh, the next one is really just moving money in the water budget, it is gonna increase to the water enterprise budget. We're proposing additional ten thousand, the bar blue parking water rebate program for next year. Mossfield has increased their water rates, which impacts all the water that goes to Amara, so we're putting some more money down line. Uh, and it's coming from the long-term debt service principal, which will be reduced. Pay off some short-term debt, right?
I'm an expert.
So, uh, we're just gonna leave that money around.
Were you being facetious that it was, uh, well-received, or were you, or something, use all the money now?
No, we, 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 good, used it all, this year, we spent it all.
Jim, we're putting more in.
We're putting more in, it was special, uh, addition for Christian Panetski, so it's I didn't think we'd spend it all, I didn't, I don't know. People would use it, so good.
Oh, yeah, I've heard, yeah, many people, I didn't expect.
That's great.
Same for Great, great.
All right, a lot of them.
Saving waters. Did I read it?
I'm sorry, is there any questions, concerns, announcements?
No.
A lot of them. Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to approve line, oh wait, shoot. Um, move to approve line item adjustments in the FY twenty-five water enterprise fund operating budget, um, for annual town meeting for twenty-four, Article Nine, for net impact of zero to address expense concerns and counter being
Move by Ms. Harrison, second, that was, can't feel, excuse me, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here's unanimous.
For the special town meeting, annual town meeting articles to vote tonight, you have a scratchy in front of you?
Yeah.
Is it up there? If you want the detail is in the back, but I'm gonna shoot might be a lot more familiar with that.
Yeah, because in the back, it doesn't look like the, the, um, town third point was gonna be in the main, that consent again, that one, right?
All right. So all everyone, if you can see them, unpaid bills, the budget, uh, FY twenty-four budget, recons, community preservation, additional set sides. All those seem pretty basic, right? Annual town meeting compensation of local officials, reports of lost commission, waterways, North Course, Coast Water, transfer station, water enterprise, stabilization, other whole funds. Any concerns of those thus far?
No, maybe, maybe should we go to the special town meeting articles first, and then go to the annual town meeting.
Okay, well, it was just, we're almost done here, so we'll just do community preservation decisions, and the chapter ninety-one liability. You're back here, we're in, all right. So let's go back. To suggest to the special town meeting. We find that out.
So do you want a motion to approve the consent agenda? Now, looking, first we have to approve the articles, and then we would go on to the consent agenda. I mean, this is where you can say yes or no, or the party vote.
Or should we do this without more, kind of being for, we're there for every single rap we vote for, it's kind of weird at town meeting, but
I think Jim has self
Maybe we just
She knows that this is happening.
Okay.
She's not gonna be the next meeting either, so and we have to do the, uh
So we need to go Article Five, Article, and your, right?
Or you could say one through four, as a town meeting. I'm gonna wanna do it.
So let's do one through three first?
Yeah, I
I love a motion.
Uh, move that the select board approve or recommend special town meeting, Article One, unpaid bills, Article Two, specifically for your budget balance and record situation. And Article Three, community preservation, um, set asides. Uh, for recommendation for acceptance by county.
All right, motion by Ms. Canfield, second. Second, second by Miss Harrison. Questions, concerns, just the first three.
No. I guess we do what we talk to, like, everyone.
I don't know.
But it's for the advisor Yeah, well, well, first of all, if someone's not here and they can't vote, is that right? No matter what we
Right, so it's gonna be for
So it's, and it's what it's gonna be, it's gonna be for zero.
If we voted yes on one through three, it's gonna show up at town meeting as full zero.
And we left, we left off number four.
Right.
Because, what?
My thought, man.
We want okay, right, sorry.
More to the
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, because I was, I was, I was attempting at the beginning to get rid of the items that they consent agendas.
Fun moment.
But, it's, it doesn't matter, yeah.
So we split it up to either one's just on special account, with all of those.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Now I understand.
Yeah, all right, so we have some seconded by Ms. Harrison, all those in favor of just those, top three?
Aye.
It's more by unanimous, or all right, so now we'll talk about change of town clerk, and we'll link it to appointments. Thoughts, concerns? Yes?
Yeah, I think that we, we fully vetted this, um, our, it's obviously pre-made, or we are not certain, um, but that given the incredible importance of this decision, um, and the professionalism that is required, then I would fully support, uh, uh, this particular article. Be happy to to that.
Absolutely. I just I support.
I agree, I just, I think the process is complicated too. Because the article authorizes a two step process to change the charter through special legislation. And then the general bylaws, if the, if the charter change is enacted, then the referendum vote would not be helped unless the legislature requires it as part of the, the will of the charter change.
Well, I, I, of you, Mr. Spent, you felt, since you put it from here, that it, it seems like the article covers the whatevs and where it was on the, you know, and however we're gonna have to go through it, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it's complicated, might be a good opportunity for our main town council to be able to explore the complexity of it.
So, so is this suggestion he, that he would.
I mean, no, I'm just, I, I, I don't have a question, I'm not, I don't understand policy.
Oh.
That's his mind.
No.
So I, you know, and, and all these, like, I think people will have questions about it and I think we might wanna let him know that we expect, um, to the level of first parties.
And, and the why this, why this wording?
Yes.
Why this? Is it gonna happen, one, is this policy we want, is this a, a change we want, two, is this the negative?
Right. Negative, so agree, I agree on, is the change a lot, but I think we need to make our town, um, council help on the second part. Because it's why we hire it, it's why we hire them, we want a town, we want an active town, um, council who can support us at town meeting and this is not for the poor of us to explain a complicated process, a legal process. So that's my input on that.
We'll give that heads up. Honest mind.
Take a little winging. See how he does.
Yeah, let's see. Sure.
Did you hear that?
Let's get a.
Let's, I, I agree with, I agree with the change.
Right.
Um, I believe that the select board recommend to town meeting approval of article four, change of the county to a cooperative session. Second.
Move by Ms. Cantile, second by Ms. Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. Right. On to the annual town meeting.
Like, for the consent agenda, that's in this intention.
Yes, so it was, we're just agreeing on the consent agenda items.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Move that the, uh, select board recommend, um, the following articles for, uh, approval by town meeting, um, for the annual town meeting, article number one, occupation of local officials, article number two, the boards of boards committees, article number five, waterway enterprise budget, article number six, water enterprise budget, article number seven, waste water enterprise budget, article eight, transfer station enterprise budget, article nine, water enterprise budget, article ten, stabilization fund, access levy, article eleven, revolving fund limits, article thirteen, community reservation decisions, and article fifteen, uh, master or law chapter ninety one liability.
Move by Ms. Cantile for second, second by Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous.
So, I'm just confused, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So you voted the special town meeting articles, we have not voted the annual town meeting articles.
We just did the end of the.
No, you did the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
You did not do the articles for the annual town meeting.
Right, they did.
Um.
They voted to recommend the items that are indicated on the sheet as consent agenda, not for the consent agenda, but to forward to town meeting the recommendations.
Yeah, so those, um, we got that.
All of them.
So you're in favor of all of those consent agenda items?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Unanimous.
But you're still gonna go to the other articles?
Yes, they said that those may have some controversy, because lawyer goes out of the way to, you know, all three of those, but maybe one of those other ones, someone may wanna talk about.
So you did a two per.
But you want the two per.
Okay.
Above the value, we just.
Just like it's very funny, yes.
Yeah, they didn't consent the two votes yet.
We'll do the actual. That's what I was voting.
No, no, to recommend those are, they're recommended to. Well, they voted to recommend those articles, yes, they didn't recommend to put them on the consent agenda yet.
Yes, we'll do that next.
You could amend the motion to say.
Well, let's, we'll just, we'll just keep going.
Yep.
Hey, does anyone wanna speak? On anything that's not on the consent agenda, capital plan, the operating budget, community preservation.
Well, we already approved the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any concerns, capital plan, any concerns?
No, but I would like to, uh, the board of where, I might, that the bylaw review committee um, has, um, met and voted on articles sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, uh, nineteen, two, uh, oh yeah, nineteen and twenty. No, not twenty, I'm sorry, articles sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, both bylaw, um, events were reviewed by the bylaw committee and unanimously voted to support, to recommend to the board their support.
Excellent. All right.
I, I'm a little concerned.
Yes.
I'm not sure that the bylaw review committee reviews zoning bylaws. I, I, I guess.
So, that was debated.
Okay.
Um, and it's actually exactly why we need a bylaw review. So the language in the, um, it, it, in the general bylaw, I was trying to.
General bylaw, okay.
In the general bylaws defines what the bylaw committee is supposed to do and it doesn't.
It says.
Yeah, I don't know.
So.
Everyone has. It's in the definition, so the actual, what bylaw review is supposed to do is nebulous, and that's what your confusion was.
Zoning bylaws. Right.
And then, but when you went back and look at the definition, you've beaten that, it's pretty, it's clear. So what bylaw needs to do is recommend clear language in the definition.
And I can care about them themselves.
Well, no, it's very clear that they have the authority in, if you go back and look at the definition.
Okay.
So if you just read what's in the bylaw now, you know, in the, in the definition, what bylaw already does.
Yep.
You could say, you could go back.
Say.
But if you went and look at the words that are in them and go back to the definitions of general bylaw, it's clear. And that, that's the piece that was missing when they implemented the special. So I don't think there's any, and I believe it's no question that, that's within the report. This board can choose to discount that, this is their recommendation.
Well, I think there's two separate issues, one is their authority, what we need to do.
Right.
And what's in front of us right now.
Well, if you don't have, we can get to my cap, but I, I just feel like it, it doesn't matter what they think at this point because it's, there's no practical. There's no, all right, well, let me ask this question, so what if the, uh, zoning, the, what if the bylaw review committee decided that they don't approve of the zoning bylaw, the MBTA compliance? They would come and bring their recommendations to us for our consideration. And we have not had an opportunity, and we found it for us, because, and what they felt was, because they did support them, that there wasn't additional, if they, if they had said, we don't like this. Well, and so did, did the zoning bylaw, did the planning, people go to, yes, bylaw review committee people? With a presentation?
Yes, Adam Everett sits on, uh, Adam lays on, she presents it to the board. Yeah. Sorry, getting the police, uh.
No, no, but again.
The only bylaw, the only comment that was made that I would bring back is on, you think that part of the D is, they think, is, I assume we can make it be appropriate.
I think that's what you did.
That would be good.
No, I have, they would have been in favor of being hired.
Well, they can't, you can't do higher.
I don't think that's, well, so they were.
Maybe, maybe if they can, maybe tell them to go to the small room.
All right.
Any concerns, speaking of, any of those bylaws? Does anyone vote no on any of these, that's what I want to know. Any concerns?
None.
Right?
Talking about.
Talked about all.
Oh, and they're, um, they're well run too, yeah.
Yeah.
The zoning, I mean specifically the zoning, the lot work. Yeah, good. And the revolving that is. It's probably not a consent agenda, just completely made it, and then.
Yeah, Cap, please, you have what we should do.
So can I then get a motion to support?
Move to support articles three, capital plan, four, the operating budget, uh, twelve, community preservation article, sixteen, zoning bylaw, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped quarter of the last question, fourteen, quarter of the Lazo trust, small grant program, uh, zoning bylaw, MBTA compliance, which is under sixteen, number seventeen, zoning bylaw, amended wireless communication, number eighteen, general bylaws, amended agriculture revolving fund, nineteen, general bylaws, handicap partner fund, partner met, and twenty, local segments.
Move by Ms. Conley, all those in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry, second, I'm sorry, I was reading, uh, seconded by Ms. Cantile, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So now we need to place on the cassettes.
Right?
Yes. Correct, so may I have a motion on first, the special town meeting, it took place, articles one, two, and three on the cassettes.
So.
Seconded by Ms. Cantile. Any other questions, concerns, we've done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is unanimous. Have a motion for the annual town meeting, so.
Move to, move to add to the consent agenda, article one, article two, article five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen.
All right, move by this.
Consent agenda for the annual town meeting, second.
Move by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Cantile, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is unanimous. Sorry to make that complicated, that was my, what was the rub you have?
And then the last is to assign the special town meeting and annual town meeting more or less.
Nor against the law.
Okay.
Will be a consensual, is it not? All in favor?
All in favor. So, special town meeting.
The chair.
Yeah, we already had said the chair.
I mean, the chair.
That's one.
No, I mean the first three, yeah.
First three?
Yeah, I pulled up last year's.
All right.
So first three, special town meeting is more or less, okay?
We would like to do town clerk to like, who's?
Either, or policy, I don't mind doing it, or you can do it just for either one.
What about the one, uh, Cantile?
Uh, why don't I do this?
Okay.
All right, so consent for annual, is that also usually the chair?
Not necessarily consent, normally the budget articles, so.
So capital and operator?
Last year, Tony did one, two, and, yeah, and four. And Andrew, you did the capital plan, should be the liaison.
All right, so, so one, two, four, and more.
Andrew, you gonna do, so we do capital?
Sure, I'll do capital. Waterways, Susan, you get that?
Chair.
We would like to evolve.
Liaison now. Who's the liaison golf?
We don't have any, oh, we have.
We don't have the town committee anymore.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
All right, more, more we'll get that.
You're having that ways golf.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make more.
All right, we put more on golf course. You need something, do you wanna do wastewater and transfer station?
I would love to do wastewater and transfer station.
What's the city excited for?
Yeah, that's sexy.
A line of.
All right.
So is Karen doing all three, wastewater, transfer, and water enterprise?
Um, I think Harrison is doing water waste.
Yeah.
Water enterprise.
So, I mean, wastewater.
Water enterprise, I do water enterprise too.
Well, I was, I, I think I slept, but it's like wastewater transfer, yeah, I can do wastewater.
Is saying that, yeah, and Conley gets nine as well. Our stable section fund excess levy.
That's your.
Oh, thank you. Revolving fund limits.
That's even better.
That's the most money is not.
Yes. Can't, can't spell fund, but that's fun. We would like that one. Susan.
No.
Okay, Susan.
By, by, do you, do not want it?
Uh, uh, yeah.
That's Susan.
I said it's consent, that's my, it's.
Right.
Hard point, like, he did it last time.
Oh, community preservation, you want that one?
I can do the recession one as well.
All right.
I'm sorry, who is community preservation?
Me.
Karen.
Karen.
Yeah, and recession.
Twelve thirteen, we got a lot now, so we better spread it well.
I gotta step up there. About four to one thousand, it's really.
Oh, that's more, she does like that one, that's more.
Yeah, she asked her to do the.
I can do chapter.
Chapter fifty is, is Cantile's. All right, well, here are the interesting.
Well.
MBTA.
Well, the planning will be, we're just getting.
That'll be here, oh, I don't know.
Well, have a staff who all the meetings on MBTA.
Yeah, yeah.
Are saying if the process was well run.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I sat through, not all of them, but I met.
Well, but I, I think that, I guess my point is that the select board, I think, needs to be given a curve for the climate and this whole MBTA thing and towns, I, I just think that we need to stand up for this.
Oh, definitely, I kind of personally agree, and it's the one.
And they're, they have to deal with all the technical issues that would be, you know, Karen, Joseph.
Correct, correct.
And so, but I wouldn't like saying that our work was done.
Oh, definitely. So you're gonna do that?
Yeah. To the wireless is another, I'm happy to take that.
All right, Cantile, a little wireless. Agriculture.
Well, we should get you.
I can do the agriculture and let me make that one. But mine is fine, because I don't have many. I, I can do eighteen and nineteen, very likely.
All right, local option acceptance.
It's from eighteen, nineteen, one, two, twenty, twenty.
Sure, yeah, I'll do twenty.
It's just.
I don't remember which one we did this.
Can I, what is a local option on the consent agenda?
It, it could be, you can add it, you can add your one, all houses on the consent agenda too.
No, the housing, they wanna make. Do you want?
You, you certainly can add global option if you want to, no one's gonna cite you to take something off, you have to, add, add more.
Well, I'm just, I just want, what is local option?
That's the personal property tax, to not, your grounds and bills per value less than five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we wanna make statements about it? Because we put on the consent agenda, it's likely to just sort of go over people's heads. Whereas if there's a message that's a good message to be delivered, I think there is some there.
I think so.
It's like a message, is, it's like, it's not, the juice does not work this week, they're spending so much.
Move this.
We were yelling.
Juice does not work this week.
Right?
If I ever. Think that.
All right, yeah.
Get that in a minute?
Well, like I said, it just, it deserves a mention.
You think, you don't think that, I mean, you know.
Well, I think, I think.
I wanna see some juice.
Right? Yeah, all right, we'll mention it.
It's also, it's, it's.
It's possible, only Susan says exactly that.
Right.
All right.
On to new business. Frame layer licenses.
Lock that up there.
Up thirty nine.
Good. Um, move to approve the brain layer license, but land us or twarks. All information is provided.
Motion by this, Campbell, there are a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. One day one and mall list. Licenses, all the intro, who's there? The motion.
Move to approve the one day one and mall license to sasketters cocktails for a shark society, trivia night fundraiser, G A R O, frequently featured July on March second, twenty twenty-four from two to sixty, I'm sorry. From six to nine, yeah, also move to approve a one day one and mall license to Maladies Fish Market for St. Patrick's Day. Uh, St. Patrick's Parade Mayor fundraiser at Eight Allen Park on March seventh, twenty twenty-four from seven to eleven, yeah. Move to approve a one day one and mall license to Maladies Fish Market for Holly Hill Farm fundraiser dinner at Eight Allen Park on March eighth, uh, twenty twenty-four from seven to ten, yeah. Move to approve a one day one and mall license to Superior Service for a baby shower at the Sitchwood Harbor Community Building, including Ford Jericho. On March ninth, twenty twenty-four from eleven AM to two three, yeah. And move to approve a one day one and mall license to St. Mary's in the Tivity for a St. Patrick's boil dinner at the Parrish Center to foster, Edward Foster Group. On March sixteen, twenty twenty-four from five thirty to eight, yeah. And move to approve a one day one and mall license to Blackgate for a baby shower in the Department of Community Building, including Ford Jericho on March sixteen. Before on twelve, apartment, and five, let's move to approve the one day all out of all license to H four for library foundation fundraiser. And Sitchwood Library eighty-five for extreme on March third, twenty twenty-four, six AM to ten.
Thank you. Motion, the move by this Campbell, one of the settings.
Second.
By this, Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Would like to report.
We have a report.
The two liaises.
Liaises, we have a report.
You have a report, the report is.
We have a joint report, yes, of this there, so they just heard. Uh, reporting on two, well, the, the Autobank Property Committee has been made fairly regularly, uh, meetings and apple site visits, um, and making good progress. So there were, um, two things, we're working on a survey to get a sort of rate out and wanted to discuss how, um, if you all would wanna review the survey prior to it being sent out. Um, so that was our first discussion point, and then our second thing that we wanted to discuss was that there's no way we can get the survey out, the survey results back and present to the board about deadline of March fifteenth, which was the deadline they gave them. So we wanted to propose moving that deadline to, um, another day. So those are our two discussion points.
Yeah, I think you.
No, not anything else.
Is that required?
Oh, it has more part, oh, we just wanna take the. We just wanna take the temperature, we're okay, pushing it out, we have town meetings too and.
Yeah.
Bitches, it's all a bunch of other stuff, so putting them on.
So, even though there was the requirement deadline, that's.
We, we told them March fifteenth.
Right, but then they're charged to report to us, the feeling is, they could, they could, they're absolutely prepared to come report where they are.
Yeah.
But our feeling is that it would be a better use of their time and our time to wait until the survey results, I think, and give us their warrant concrete.
Yes.
So we would go back to the board and, and, um, and I'll think, I think it's just, I don't think we, we really, we would.
Yeah, we don't.
We would liaise on them back.
Yeah, we would just let them know, check their, yeah, deadlines. And then I think it might be bad, I shall for you to just review the survey and then.
Not, not to have a lot of mail, but like send back to one of us to say, yeah, any comments on it.
Just because I think, and I think I recognize the committee, if we do have quite a few people that are, um, above others, and we really wanna make sure that we're serving the town.
Right.
Making sure we have larger interest, so I think we've pushed for that as well, um, but wanna make, but, you know, we.
Of course.
So, and we think you may have some input.
That's good. Okay, without objection, then we'll liaise on that.
We will liaise that, um, I have one other waterways, next agenda, I mean, next time we meet, the black boxes are on, so, um, that's. We'll submit a next.
What else?
I do.
Oh, great.
Um, quickly, I just wanted to let the board know that, um, EDC would like to, without, there's no objection from this board. EDC is going to form a lighthouse celebration subcommittee, um, to work with the historical society, um, to really make sure that the whole community can enjoy that momentous occasion that occurred. Um, and since they are, uh, they don't meet until the end of March, and like we started, so they wanted, um, to see if there's going to be, if there's anybody on the board that we find that that was a problem or a judge. In this case, they're not gonna present, but if there's none, and they will, we do have the authority to possibly report. Seeing no objections.
That sounds like a great plan, actually. And I'd support, support and celebrate, it's a huge opportunity, and the more people that are involved, the better, in line, yeah.
Yeah, and so they, they're related, their focus, first, will be non-historical aspect, but I'm basically being involved in, in, to all the opportunities. Yes, is their charge.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I'm gonna liaise on that back as well, and I also, last thing I want to tell the board that Chamber Commerce, as elected president, Mr. Forman, who is, um, who's very instrumental with the Central Plus Global effort in twenty twenty, and has been elite. I think we're really excited to see the leadership stats to drive our seat now.
I'm sorry.
Who is it?
Jane Norton. Last one. Great news.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. Correspondence.
Oh, I hope we have one thing, I did forget one, oh, sorry, it was important.
Correspondence.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Um, first to answer your question about the zoning bylaws, so the definition in, the definition, it says the word bylaws shall mean the general bylaws, the zoning bylaws, and any other, and then we go to what they're supposed to do, it's to review bylaws.
Okay.
So to find it, but, I think that rock, but well, my surrender.
I'm not, no, no, I had the same thing when I read it, it would.
It's just that I do, I, I'm just gonna say this once, I view zoning bylaws, it's extremely complicated, and I, I, I don't, I'm not entirely sure that a gen, that a bylaw review committee has the expertise to weigh in on what I consider extremely technical information. And that's just my, okay. No, but that's really important, because then now the board, that committee is wanting to be looking at these things, and one thing they may want to revise is that definition, but as it stands now, it's even tougher. Okay, and that's exactly the sort of thing that needs to be cleaned up, yeah, because I don't disagree with an argument that definitely needs to make. But presently, our charge is incorrect, because the charge rewrote says they will review only the general bylaws. So we, it, well, it may not be incorrect, it's inconsistent with the bylaws, and it's inconsistent with the bylaws that's created. So, this board, and we, we don't have to put this on a future agenda, this board may wish to either leave it stand, which is, we're only asking you to. Right, knowing that we're inconsistent, or we need to amend the charge.
Or you can sign the charge, yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to have a, yeah, that's, yeah, that is, I think you can have this.
Correspondence.
We have, we only have one correspondence, but it is pretty important, um, from Good Energy regarding processing error, where a hundred and five air source customers in Hummer Rock were mistakenly signed up for Sichuan Community Electricity Program. Um, although they opted out, so they, um, had opted out, letters are going out, um, March first, which is this Friday, explaining the refund, and the refunds are following quickly thereafter.
But if I understand all that correspondence correctly, the refunds may have not be ones, nothing.
True.
Um, so if anyone's expecting a windfall, I would say it'd be like the AT&amp;T give everyone five dollars back for not having service done one day last week.
Yeah. What was about the juice and screens?
You're not calling a bank for this.
Yeah.
It's a good display of.
Well, good.
Most good, that's what you're gonna be in.
Process service, um, a, a record, rectifying problem, and a quick solution and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Communication.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to accept the minutes for select board meeting held on February seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Some.
So, seconds.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Motion to adjourn, let's sign down.
Yeah.
Would you wanna sign down?
That means.
Second.
Harrison, second by Ms. Conley, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, aye.